Good evening. Tonight's work session, I want to, before we begin, I want to ask Councilmember Deversa to lead us in that invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will you pray with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we ask for your continued guidance for this council, as well as our staff. We ask that you would look out for each and every person in our fair city and in our community. We thank you for all of the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We're ever mindful that it is through you that we get the strength and the will to make the challenging decisions and the not-so-challenging decisions for our community. We ask that you continue to support our troops that are fighting for our country and serving us so well. We ask that you would bless each and every person that's here tonight and give this council and staff the guidance that we need as we look forward to our budget, our future budget. In thy heavenly name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And we're also very fortunate to have the Sons of the American Revolution here tonight. And if I could ask them to lead us in our pledge.
Okay. All right. Please. Ready? Halt. To the right face. Southern. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Poop.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight is a work session, which is a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. There are five items on the agenda tonight. Public comment is allowed as germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk's staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. And I also want to say hello to our city manager, Chris Lagerblum. He's not physically here tonight, but he's watching and listening. So, he's at a city manager's conference, so he's here in spirit with us. Will the city clerk please sound the first item?
Mr. Mayor, our first item is a proclamation for Constitution Week that will be presented by Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Color guard to the front. I'd like to welcome the color guard from Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, here tonight for this proclamation. Two-hundred-and-thirty-two years ago, one of the most important documents in the world was written. Today, on our homeland here, we once again fight a battle to preserve that document and preserve the rights that we fought for to achieve our independence and maintain a republic. Whereas the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice, embodying the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, not by men. And whereas September 17th, 2009, marks the 222nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this memorable anniversary and to patriotic exercises that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law, Niner One Five, guarantees the issue of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, hereby dedicate and proclaim the week of September 17th, 2009 through September 23rd, 2009, as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and to express gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship in our republic, functioning under the superb body of laws, the Constitution of the United States of America, given under his hand and seal, the city of Milton, Georgia, on this 14th day of September, 2009, Mayor Joe Lockway.
Thank you very much. May I say that we thank the city of Milton for this recognition, but also the participation we have as the Sons of the American Revolution is a proud moment for us to recognize you folks as outstanding citizens that recognize the importance of this living document that has been a model for many, but equalled by none. Cool.
Again, I want to thank you guys for being here. It's always proud for us to, and honored to have you guys here, lead us with our pledge. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Item number two is discussion on the proposed change to the Northwest Quadrant in Crab Apple. Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Yes, many of y'all know that J.T. Adams has come before the CPAC and is looking at putting forth a plan for some changes to the Northwest Quadrant, which would require a change to the Crab Apple Master Plan as it currently is. And I felt like because of the, I know there's been several plans and several discussions out there, it'd be best to go ahead and bring him forward and let him show everybody together at one time what that plan is and to get some input from the community on the plan. You're up, J.T. And I do think CPAC were coming to be part of this tonight, so.
Do you have a recommendation as to where this should go? Right here?
Yes.
Will anybody be able to see it? Can you guys see this? Jeanette? Jeanette? Do you have a card? Just give me a card. Okay. Do you have a card? Well, I think most of you have seen this before, just to get everybody oriented towards the road. This is Crab Apple Road, heading west, and this is Birmingham Highway, north to south. For the fans, as I am, of the old blind dog, it's right here. Did that give you orientation?
Yeah. Thanks when I, that one right there.
Oh, it's down. Should I untap? Thank you.
Excuse me, J.T., for one second, just to make sure everybody knows, this is not a city-sponsored plan here. This is something that you're presenting to the public, as well as the planning commission and the city council, but this is not.
That is correct.
We know anything about you yet, or...
Gotcha. That is true. So, these are the existing buildings. That's the old Donley House. This is the dentist and what will be Scoops. That's another building here, and then the old blind dog, as well as the hair salon are here. These buildings are not yet built. All this is not yet here. This is John Wieland's development back here. The proposed site for City Hall is on the western side here. It would be oriented a little bit different. This plan will have several iterations, even more to come, for sure, but the third iteration, which is not colored yet, has City Hall here on this axis down the road, and then a future site, if it happens. That's where the Shell station is for a future courthouse, if that's necessary. And then we have the proposed library site there. I've got an additional five acres under contract here for parking. It's at a higher elevation than this, if y'all are familiar with the area, and it would serve as an asphaltless parking area. It would also enter into the second floor. So, you'd have the first floor on grade here, and then you'd have the second floor on grade from the west. The funding for this is chiefly through a foundation. They are a foundation which centers, has several sort of columns, if you will. Their primary focus is on cancer research, but they also have an education and arts column, which is where we fall under. They are very interested in my concept called CIRCA. I don't know how many of you know about that, but it's basically a history shop that we do lectures there. I've got a historian that's an author. He does quite a bit, he tours the country, in fact, the world. And I think it's fitting that on this proclamation day that we talk about that, because that's basically the focus of the foundation. So, to put it simply, they want to invest in a community to further the educational goals of history, and not history narrow-mindedly, but all history. Specifically, though, the United States as well, but world history as well, and how that interacted with our republic. So, these buildings right here are just mocked up here for size. There is nothing certain about this. This would be a 30,000-square-foot building, if that's what the city needs. It would accommodate more because of the five acres here for parking. These would stay in their currently-zoned capacity. We would obviously need, in order to pay for all this green space, we would need to have some density here, but when you subtract out the townhomes, the net density actually goes down. This is currently zoned for 46 townhomes and five single-family, or four single-family in the back here, so we'd lose 150,000 feet. And then whatever the plan is for these two buildings would absorb some of that, but it would be a net loss in terms of density. They plan to do works of art in all the squares. Think of Savannah and that type of feel. They will pay for mature trees so that we have shaded squares. They plan to make it nice. So, let me describe this building first. That would be the CIRCA History Guild. It would have a holographic theater in it. Basically, you'd have an actor that would sort of interact with a hologram and tell not only America's story, but everything from Columbus all the way through the Battle of Hastings, the Magna Carta, and things of that nature. It would also have a separate theater that would be a performing arts theater that would be available to the community. And we would also do a symposiums three times a year, four times a year, and invite historians from all over the world to come and talk. And my historian at CIRCA has a cadre of folks that he's got on the list as soon as we can get turned loose. So, that's basically it in a nutshell. This is the proposed library site. Obviously, that's not within my control. That will be chosen by the Fulton County Commissioners ultimately, but we believe that having that synergy with the city, the performing arts theater, CIRCA, and all the other elements that make up a community in one place is a smart way to develop. It also reduces traffic, but it doesn't eliminate it, obviously. But these back here are townhomes, mainly to transition from the commercial and the municipal into the next neighborhood. They would be set back. This is a little tiny staging area that would basically be used sporadically for events like maybe the Roundup or the Antique Fair or something of that nature. We plan to put water fountains in the water features and create, this one's all without asphalt. This area right here will be done with pea gravel and turf so that it will have a natural feel. And that's it. I've presented this a lot, so you'll forgive me, but I anticipated lots of questions tonight, so fire away.
Anybody have any questions for J.T.?
I guess the first question I have is, as far as the Performing Arts Center and the History Center, what cost would that be to the city, if any?
Zero.
I like that answer.
That is the foundation's purpose. This economic model would not work even without the current credit crisis. There would not be enough revenue generated in that to sustain a development. So, the foundation is going to be generous, and hopefully my historian will be a bestselling author to pay his own salary. I'm kidding. They intend to fund it quite generously.
What kind of timeline are they looking at? Because that's another question I get. What kind of timeline would you be looking at? Go ahead.
They keep asking me why we haven't moved forward, and I've explained to them that anytime you do something in a municipal format like this, that it takes time, so they're ready to go.
And I know we have some people here from the Georgia Ensemble Theater. The Performing Arts Center, have you made any decisions, or have they made any decisions, or do they have any set standards and all that you would be looking at for that?
No, actually, the foundation has more experience with that than I do, so I will have to defer that. But I would not know how to set up a theater, but the design is for it to be a community theater with community productions and to be available to the community at, certainly within scheduling capability. So, that would be wonderful.
And when do they need to have, the foundation, when would it need to have some kind of answer? Because obviously, this would require a change to what is current, because most of that area is currently zoned for high-density residential.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Is all of it high-density residential?
No, everything here is zone C2, effectively. It's got some zoning constraints on it, but this back here is all residential.
Okay, so that would have to be rezoned from residential to...
Correct. As long as the process is moving along, they'll be patient. They are anxious to do something, particularly with CIRCA. Just so you'll know, all the other elements to it just allow them to create a synergy in the community. It's almost, in fact, they want to do a documentary about the whole process to see how well it goes. Hopefully, there won't be much infighting, but that's even part of it, just to see how the process unfolds. And this is something that they're really passionate about, and it may have something to do with me being passionate about it, but...
And they understand the design standards for the Crab Apple area and would not have a problem with any of that?
Well, I'm going to do all the design, I mean, with the city, obviously. I mean, you've seen the buildings I've already built. The hierarchical nature of the buildings will be such that City Hall and the library will have a taller parapet because they sort of book in the development and that, but that'll obviously be up to the city and the design review board and...
Okay. Do I have any other questions from city council? And then I'll get to the... Alan?
I've got two questions. How you doing, Ms. Relling?
Good.
Good. I have a couple of questions. One has to do with, you had mentioned that it was a foundation that does a lot of cancer research.
Correct.
Okay. What is the name of that foundation?
It's called the Southern Foundation, but they've asked me, they want to be anonymous, so that's as far as I'm going to go with them.
Yeah.
So, that's not the real name of the foundation?
They've got, yeah, they've asked to be anonymous.
Okay. That's something I might have to grapple with, because obviously, with the city being behind a development, I'd like to know who's giving that money.
Oh, at the appropriate time. I mean, if the caution light, at least, is proffered by the city, then they'll be happy to sit down with the city and talk to you about it.
Okay. And the other question I had, I understand the changes that would need to be made to the Crab Apple Master Plan. The other question I had to do, you made a comment that that development would reduce traffic in Crab Apple. Could you explain that a little bit further on how that would actually reduce, rather than increase, the traffic problem in Crab Apple?
Well, what I was alluding to is when you, density in city planning or urban planning actually is known to reduce traffic because people tend to stay in the same locality for longer periods of time, and it reduces the burden on the subsequent. I think I've mentioned this before, when you go to Target and get toothpaste and hair color, and then you go over here to get your dry cleaning, and then you eat at a restaurant over here, and then you pick up your kids from school for there, and you go into several places, you actually burden the traffic in the entire city. If a lot of the needs can be met, such as restaurants, the library in particular, City Hall, I mean, it will reduce the burden on Deerfield tremendously to have City Hall over there, so it tends to, density tends to lower the traffic by virtue of the time spent on the site. Take, for instance, if somebody is at the library, they may go and get some ice cream at lunchtime with their kids, they may pick up some bagels for the next morning here, and they may actually go to the old blind dog for a beer. They're at the site longer.
I hope their kids aren't drinking beer.
Yeah, root beer for kids. But I don't want anybody to be under the illusion that we're going to, unless we get some dollars here, which I understand have been offered, that this would, I mean, we're the 10th-largest MSA in the country, and the north is definitely moving to the south. We could probably have a show of hands here from people that are down from the north, and so we are going to experience traffic, but what we're trying to do is raise the quality of, the social utility of a certain area and to mass the municipal elements altogether.
And could you explain one more time for me, the net, you said there would be a net decrease in density, but could you explain to me exactly what changes would need to be made to the Crab Apple Master Plan to make that become a reality?
Well, you've got 44 townhomes that are zoned here, and then there's, I'm sorry, 46, and I think there's four single-family up in this area right here. That would go away, obviously, which would be good news for several builders. Not only would you eliminate this, but you'd also instantly reduce the inventory.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. J.T.'s presenting.
Hi.
Okay, cool. I barely have a phone, so I'm going to stand here and see if I can hear you.
This is Chris Lagerblum, our city manager, calling in from remote.
Oh, he's probably got a question.
All right, so you said 46 townhomes, four single-family homes, that would go away and be replaced with, how much, what's the density of that altogether?
Well, this is 25,000 feet for the library. That's what they've requested. I do not know yet what the City Hall would require, but it's, well, I understand between 25,000 and 30,000 feet, but I have no idea. But we've specked out a 30,000-foot footprint here. This density is already in place, and this would be determined, these two buildings would be determined by the needs of the community.
And those are the arts buildings?
Those are, yeah, the performing arts and then the CIRCA History Guild.
And if I can comment, and J.T. jump in if I'm talking out of turn and our city attorney, but I want to understand, this is basically a proposal that J.T. has done and what they would like to propose. This is not something that has gone through our staff, it's not been presented to us, it's, you know, all the calculations aren't done, so, you know, if this were to go through, we would get a lot more detail and whatnot to make decisions on.
Well, and not only that, we, at the appropriate time, will invest in building schemes and sort of lay this out properly, once we get everybody's feedback. I mean, my biggest thing is to mass everything together, but also is to create these wonderful parks and monuments, so when people visit the site, it's not your typical, okay, I see these begonias, and they're over there, and they're over there, and they're over there. They would actually see a statue of, or a plaque honoring the Cherokee Indians, or George Washington, or something of that nature that would give them, or John Milton, for instance. If you can imagine, just try to envision Savannah, where you can go into any of those squares, it's like an outdoor room. I mean, that's what I want to create.
I have a comment, have a comment, if that's okay. I wasn't going to make this comment, but now that you're on the phone, Chris, I think I'll make it so you can chime in if needed. One of the things that I'm not sure is clear to everyone outside the council and staff is that we have embarked on a look and a review of where our City Hall not only should be, but the, you know, what we need in a City Hall. When J.T. talks about whether we need 25,000 square feet or 30,000 square feet, we don't know. We're doing a needs evaluation. Now, that needs evaluation is not based on this proposal and the Crab Apple area or the Crab Apple concept, but it's based on the fact that we do need to exit this building. We knew that from the very beginning, that we had a lease with this organization, and that we'd be leaving within three to five years was the plan. That was from day one. So, what I want everybody to understand, and if you have questions about this, we're certainly open to entertaining them as well, is that we have embarked on a needs analysis for City Hall, but that needs analysis is what's going to drive where we do finally find a place and decide to build a place, because there's, you know, several different areas within Milton that may be opportunistic. This one's very well planned and laid out, obviously, but there's still several areas and we have to kind of get through that needs analysis before we can make a decision.
Now, I would just say, that's actually our next item on our agenda, and we'll be getting a presentation on that, the needs analysis, but it is not site-specific. It's basically the facility that we would need and then find an area that that would fit or work well in, so...
Well, that's wise to do, and just to give you, to further that, the remaining buildings would be under that same sort of design scrutiny so that we could make sure that all the needs would be met from that standpoint, but...
Okay. I believe we've got some public comment first I want to hear, and then I'll allow the audience to...
I do have one more point that I wanted to get across whenever you think is appropriate.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead and finish that up, and then we'll allow...
The five acres that is currently under contract, the plan is to keep every large specimen tree there and to orient everything, the parking in the back, so that it would be a natural park as well to maintain, to keep the church, and that could be used as a community center. The foundation would just donate that, whatever you wanted to do. So, this area right...
be, but the, you know, what we need in a City Hall. When JT talks about whether we need 25,000 square feet or 30,000 square feet, we don't know. We're doing a needs evaluation. Now, that needs evaluation is not based on this proposal and the Crab Apple area or the Crab Apple concept, but it's based on the fact that we do need to exit this building. We knew that from the very beginning, that we had a lease with this organization, and that we'd be leaving within three to five years was the plan. That was from day one. So what I want everybody to understand, and if you have questions about this, we're certainly open to entertaining them as well, is that we have embarked on a needs analysis for City Hall, but that needs analysis is what's going to drive where we do finally find a place and decide to build a place, because there's, you know, several different areas within Milton that may be opportunistic. This one's very well planned and laid out, obviously, but there's still several areas and we have to kind of get through that needs analysis before we can make a decision.
Now, I would just say, that's actually our next item on our agenda, and we'll be getting a presentation on that, the needs analysis, but it is not site-specific. It's basically the facility that we would need and then find an area that that would fit or work well in.
Well, that's wise to do, and just to give you, to further that, the remaining buildings would be under that same sort of design scrutiny so that we could make sure that all the needs would be met from that standpoint, but...
Okay. I believe we've got some public comment first I want to hear, and then I'll allow the audience to...
I do have one more point that I wanted to get across whenever you think is appropriate.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead and finish that up, and then we'll allow...
The five acres that is currently under contract, the plan is to keep every large specimen tree there and to orient everything, the parking in the back, so that it would be a natural park as well, to maintain, to keep the church, and that could be used as a community center. The foundation would just donate that, whatever you wanted to do. So this area right here would basically be, save some small-caliber trees, would stay essentially as it is, and then we would lay out parking in that regard.
Do I have some public comment, Jeanette? Cards that you've gotten so far, and then we'll ask questions, then we'll hold off questions.
Yes, sir, and if you want your comments, we lost them. If you want your comments written to the record tonight, you need to come to the podium and speak. First, and if you want to just ask questions from the audience, just keep in mind that they probably won't be picked up on the recorder.
Can I suggest that we do use this microphone so that we can hear?
Would Jeanette say that we just need to, they're going to have to fill out a public comment card and then come up there?
Okay, Ms. Betty Ann Wolf?
Do we have to have a fill-out card?
That'd be, yeah.
Yeah, let's just do that.
We would just like to know, how would this affect the zoning of surrounding properties?
And do you mind, Ms. Wolf, just naming an address for the record?
Betty Ann Wolf, 1,000 Lackey Road. We'd like to know, how would this affect the zoning decisions of the surrounding properties?
Clearly, that's not a question for me. It would be a question for the city.
Tom, you want to comment on that?
Up to the podium.
Get on the microphone.
Do you want to say her, Tom? Yeah, there's one, Tom.
Tom, why don't you sit next to Jason?
Thank you, sir.
Well, it would seem to me that something of this magnitude that would be this different would really need to be taken and looked at in the context of an update to the Crab Apple Master Plan, and in that whole context, we would take a look at all the zonings around there. And so to answer your question right now, I think we just probably need to update the Crab Apple Master Plan with this in mind, or we need to do that even without this in mind, but through that process, I think we could probably get the answers that you're looking for.
Ms. Kim Horn?
Kim Horn, 415 Wade Glenn Court. This presentation, we've, I'm a member of CPAC, but I'm not at all representing CPAC here tonight and speaking on their behalf, but we've seen this before. I thought it was going to be a change to the presentation when we were seeing it tonight, but there's really no substantial changes from what we've seen. In the CPAC meeting that we had with Mr. Adams, I just wanted to make it clear that it was my understanding that CPAC did not endorse this or any other plan. We would like to see other developers come forward, other sites looked at and explored. I personally think this is putting the cart before the horse, before the needs analysis is done, so I just, I don't, I don't think that we should be listening, we should be presenting this in front of the council, even though it's a work session, until other developers have been, had their chance to weigh in on other areas and other sites. I just, and I guess I look forward to then if JT is presenting in front of City Council as a work session. I guess every time there's a rezoning, there's going to be presentations sponsored by different council members, so, thank you.
Mr. Skip, Craig?
You want me to come up there and talk to you all here?
Well, if you want you to come.
This is just a history question.
Okay.
I am, I'm the son of the American Revolution, and I'm also a member of the Halsberger Society.
Are you familiar with Fort, I mean, your history now? Are you familiar with, are you familiar with Fort Morris down at Sunbury?
I would defer to my historian. I'm a lover of history.
Okay. Well, you know, for years, since Sig Sack Miller and Jimmy Carter and even recently with Sunny Purdue, they've been trying to close down the parks, but they've particularly been trying to land develop that revolutionary site. And if you guys get involved, I expect you to stand up better than most people did to defend that. We need to make it a national park.
I appreciate that.
And we need to keep all our parks open.
I agree.
And they keep, and they keep cutting back, and according to Jan Jones, it doesn't cost that much money to keep these parks open.
Nope.
Doesn't cost them nothing. They just want to close them down so these politicians can land develop it. And we got to start understanding, all you politician, that Obama the liar and Pelosi, that manure spreader, and all you guys, we're not working for you, you guys are working for us.
Mr. Dennis Potts?
This is a question for JT.
State your name and address.
Dennis Potts, 2745 Webb Road. If by chance Fulton County decides to put the library on another site besides yours, will you continue on building the rest of the buildings for the city?
I can answer that.
What I want to do is build a community. I'm a citizen here, and that sort of speaks to the previous person. I want to, I've got young children here. I want to grow up in a town that has a small-town feel, even though we're sort of an oasis inside metropolitan Atlanta. I grew up in a small town. I want to have all these things available. If there is a better site than this to mass all these elements together than Crab Apple, then we should do it. It's really, this particular location just seems to have its own natural charm. I think it's a great location for it. I believe that in order to have a great community, we have to not be able to live so anonymously, and so massing municipal with commercial, with residential is a smart development, so that we don't wind up with a bunch of Beaufort highways and a bunch of Roswell roads that just are not worth caring about, as that video I showed speaks to. So I want the development to be the best it can be, and I'm hoping that everybody can see the wisdom of that. I am by no means have the best idea. That's one of the reasons why this plan is not further developed, because I don't want to be presumptuous. I'm trying to just get the ball rolling, to start talking about things, and everybody's got their own hot buttons about what they want. Some people want green space, some people want connectivity, some people want density, which I think is smart. Some people want to have lake features. They want to be able to walk their kids in a stroller. They want to be able to feel like they have a downtown, and so that's what I'm trying to create. It's got nothing to do with being a developer. I promise you that.
And I'd like to just comment for a second. One of the other comments, talking about this and other areas and whatnot. From what I understand, this is JT's vision. This is his wish list, this is what he would like to create. You know, he can draw a City Hall on there, he can draw a library, amusement park, whatever. That in no way means that the city's endorsing that right now or whatever. We have gone through a needs analysis that is not site-specific. We will have to go through a process. We've talked with our city attorney moving forward. Everybody will get a chance, every other land area, whatever. So again, I don't want people to think this is tied in with the needs analysis that just because Mr. Adams has drawn it on here, that that's where it's directed. I'm not saying that it's, that may be the best spot, but everyone else, every other area will get their chance to present and have everybody look at it. So again, just want to clarify that. I'm not expressing support or not support for this concept. I think it's, I see the passion and I think it looks great, but this in no way means that, you know, we're tying the two of these together. He could draw anything on there he want, but he's trying to show his vision, and that's his prerogative to present that, but I want to make sure everybody is clear that that doesn't mean that that's a locked-in site.
Ms. Heidi Souter?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heidi Souter, 525 Sunflower Court in Milton. It was my understanding that Mr. Adams presented this at the Community Participation Charette back on July 18th, and I was not at that meeting, so this is the first that I've seen of this. But I heard that pictures and stuff, so this is my first viewing this evening, but I've heard that this has been talked about a lot, and me personally, I live in the Highway 9 area, so it concerns me that the whole thought of shifting everything over to Crab Apple, which is completely the other side of town for me. So anyways, my concerns are this, that I wrote in an email to council that I would like to see proper procedure followed, which you, as mayor, you've ensured that that will happen, and my understanding of proper procedure would be the needs analysis would be done, and then an RFP would be put out so that everybody that's interested can come and present their plans, and I really hope that that happens. My other concern was that I had heard that the police and fire facilities were also going to move over there. In 2000, Fulton County had already identified this area needed a fire station. We do not have a fire station and have never had a fire station to support this area of the community. Our fire station that services this Highway 9 Deerfield area is on Thompson Road, which is four miles from here. It affects everybody's homeowner's insurance prices, it affects the response times, and since City Hall has been in this area, we've seen a wonderful increase in the, well, actually a shortened response time and a much greater, a presence, a police presence in the area, which has helped us feel more secure. I do not want to see that sacrificed, and I will really fight hard. If that's something that's going to be on the plan, I'm totally not in support of it. And as far as the library, you know, my understanding is the library is looking for an area that's serviced by public transport and to have ease of transit. You know, a four-lane road over here in Deerfield seems a lot easier to travel on than a two-lane country road over there with all the congestion, so just my personal input on it. But I do definitely have, you know, concerns, and I would like to hear more information on the police and fire services and also the RFP and the procedure. Thank you.
Ms. Sandy Jones?
Sandy Jones, 1125 South Bethany Creek Drive, Mayor and Council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for kind of clarifying and putting into perspective so that, you know, kind of separates the two issues on the needs analysis and moving forward. What I actually have is more of a, kind of a clarification question. Mr. Adams, I appreciate the fact of, you know, your family and the perspective that you're looking at giving. Kind of a follow-up to Mr. Potts' question. As you mentioned in your statement, that the board of, the library board, they're going to make an independent decision on where the library is going. There's some great opportunities that you present here. How independent is the library from your plan? If the board chooses not to go forward with the library, will you still be moving forward?
I would say, the answer to that question is yes, but again, what I want to try to convey here is that the massing of municipal elements together is the smartest way to do development. And if it is deemed that it would be better to put it over here, in this quadrant here, then we need to mass everything collectively, and if we want to have, and I'm not, certainly you could do the same type of development over here, if you had the, hey, pretty soon you had the Will and Elizabeth developer or something like that, so. But what I was trying to do is to play off of the existing buildings already there and create a hometown feeling, and having a library near City Hall is just common sense, but it's absolutely not necessary. But this is the problem with development over the last 75 years, is that the political will makes things happen in a, this way and that way, and we get what we get. And if we don't create a feeling of community in one central location and have an identity in one area, then we're just going to be an anonymous suburb in Atlanta. I mean, it's just, it's a fact. I mean, it's going to happen. You know, every town, especially of this quality, ought to have its own downtown area, and the library being next to City Hall is just natural. But the answer to your question, it doesn't have to be that way, it's just smarter to do it.
Well, given that there's an independent board that's going to be making this decision, you know, they're not looking at it from a master plan. I mean, they're not, you know, taking your plan and basing their location around that, unless I'm, or are they?
Absolutely. I mean, she brought up an excellent point. One of the criteria is proximity to public transportation, but there are, I think, 18 or so, and one of the, one of the primary considerations is near schools, obviously, and you could make that case just about anywhere in Milton.
Right.
But also other commercial elements that make the library destination more desirable, such as restaurants, such as the History Guild, such as the Performing Arts Theater, all those elements right there. So that will weigh into it. Will it be the only consideration? No, but it's part of it.
Okay, so just to clarify, and I apologize, but I just have to kind of step things up for myself, but so if, let's just say, at the end of the year, that the board decides to locate the library at another location, then it would put into jeopardy this fine arts facility that you're proposing, and also a possibility of a location of a future City Hall?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't put it into jeopardy, it makes it less desirable from a planning standpoint, from a community standpoint.
Or from a, I mean, or a business standpoint? I mean, is it still justifiable?
And I know, coming from a developer, nobody will believe me, and it really doesn't matter to me, but the foundation wants to do something good for this country. They are of the mind, that they are fed up with, you know, with politics as usual, they're fed up with all this stuff, and they think putting all these things together will be a great opportunity to develop a community that gets to know one another and that speaks to one another. I have not met half the people in this room, and that's sad, and you could blame me, you could blame other people, but having a central massed area downtown where you see people and you know their children and their brothers and their sisters and grandparents is a good way to develop a community, so.
So that your foundation would still be open to continuing to look at this, at this area?
I think so. I mean, yes, it will. They see it as an opportunity to do something good, and the library is a good part of it, but it's not the, it's not the necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Any points, public comment?
Okay, and I do want to thank Mr. Adams for presenting this, and I think you've got a great vision and put a lot of work in. I definitely see the passion. Again, I'll just stress, and you have to realize, none of us here have done this before and gone through and developed a City Hall, and our city attorney can jump right in. I know there's, we've talked about there's several different ways to do it. As I said earlier, the next presentation is going to be on a generic building that could be put pretty much anywhere that the land allows. My understanding is that once we come to grips with that, then we would go out in an RFP process and basically take proposals, and I'm sure Mr. Adams will give us a proposal, because obviously he would like to see City Hall there, and it would make that, this whole area work, but we would take proposals from anybody that could put something together for a possible City Hall location, and then we have to bring that information back, and we have to make the decision both from our, what we know, but also from input from our citizens, on the best place to put City Hall. So it's kind of like the library. You guys would love to have the library there, and it would add to it, but it's not really their ultimate decision. It's another board, and that's going to be the way City Hall is. You know, we've got to take all the information from the experts and all the different proposals we have, and we've got to go through and find out what makes the most sense for the city, and based on our knowledge as well as citizen input. So again, can you add anything to that, Mr. City Attorney?
Just the fact that working with the council and the mayor and the city manager, I know that the process that's going to be employed is going to be methodical, it's going to be transparent, and y'all will be conservative in how you move forward, and no one in this gallery or in the city will be surprised by anything. So that's what I've seen historically, and I expect nothing different this time.
Well, I'd like to add to that, that the process that you go through actually makes a better development, whether somebody else gets the deal or the foundation does. Again, I'm only speaking on my own, but on their behalf, you learn stuff, that people have better ideas than you, and you incorporate them, and the council gets to see things from a different perspective, and the citizens do as well, so that process is healthy. There's no, I certainly don't want to circumvent the process, and that's not my intent. My intent is just to, is to build an old downtown, and it's not nostalgic, it's, I believe it's necessary in our society. We live anonymously, and we talk to people over 60, and they lament the fact that we spend our time on Facebook and away from the world, and having some nice parks where we can get together on Saturday afternoon is all I'm trying to put together. And it has to be economically viable, and massing all those elements together makes it so. So hopefully, we'll get out of our cars, and we'll sit down and have a picnic, and we'll get to know each other a little bit better. That's, I honestly am telling you, that's the intent here, and if it doesn't happen, it's okay, but I think that the city of Milton, in order to preserve its interior, has to have... have a viable downtown to make it more attractive, because as people get older and they start paying those property taxes, they think of selling, but we've got to give them a reason not to sell their big tracts of land so that we can keep these beautiful properties.
Earlier, we were just looking for possible questions, and it may be that really separate from the, it sounds like there's a, a very separate process that really needs to take place. I, I heard Mr. Wilson mention that this is just a component of the whole of Crab Apple and the master plan that's currently in place. I know I've asked the question before in terms of how this would parlay into impacts with that master plan and obviously other landowners in the area, because we obviously have responsibility to look at the whole, we can't just look at one piece in particular, because, and I made a notation earlier, when the proclamation that Councilmember Lusk read, for the record, it says, "Rule by law and not by men." And we do have laws in place, and I, I think we just need to be very mindful of the fact that we do in fact have laws, and we need, whether it be this process or any other process. And I applaud those words that were in the proclamation, and I hope that we all heard them, because I think that that applies to how we plan for the future of the city, is that we do have laws in place. With respect to a question about the foundation, and that's just the first I'd heard about a foundation, again, I think we're going to have a lot of questions and things that, that come forward. But I heard a couple of things. One was that there's a foundation that's focused on cancer research, and then I heard a foundation that's focused on two particular buildings, but I think I heard that maybe the, the foundation was part of the entire proposal, and not that we need all of that resolved this evening.
The foundation has eight different pillars that they focus on. Seventy percent of what they do is cancer research.
Okay.
And then they have an arson and education pillar, if you will.
So that pillar, though, in terms of a funding perspective, JT, and I, forgive me if I misunderstood, is that initially, I thought you were mentioning that the foundation was looking at potentially funding just one component.
No, 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 no.
They're looking at-
The purpose for doing it is to create a community and having, and, and a, a place, and I think everybody, Phil Lusk, doing his wonderful work tonight, will, will agree that, that history is lost, and we may be the first generation to actually discard our, and our history, and I, I, they don't want this to happen. And so they're willing to, to purchase the land, put these elements here, carve out the library element, and then put City Hall in a, in a position where they're, exactly where they are now, except with a finer facility and one that is broken.
So the foundation's either an LLC, it's a, it's a corporate, it's an entity?
It is. It's a private foundation.
A private foundation?
501(c)(3), it's a private.
But the private foundation, basically it's looking to fund the entire development?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's, it's not a foundation just looking at historic components, it's a foundation that would be funding the whole of this development with the premise that you could swap out high-density housing, which is part of that mixed-use plan for the commercial, and that it's presuming that you would have the library there as well as the additional density and that's, that switch from the master plan. I just want to make sure I was clear as to what I was hearing.
They, they, they want to, to create something that would be worthy of, of-
But it includes that commercial component? And in terms of the, when I'm looking at the far right of this diagram, I, I think I heard you say that that's the Shell Station, so that's not currently under ownership?
No, I do not, I'm not.
And the same would be true, I guess, for this five acres to the left?
No, it is under contract, it's not, not yet.
And can you just speak briefly about the John Whelan development that's behind this development? Because obviously we have a John Whelan development that's coming forward from a zoning perspective. It's, it's, we've already had a first presentation, and we've heard a lot of different perspectives about whether or not that has connectivity to this. I know that Mr. Whelan talks about that zoning modification having some connectivity to this. Could you just speak about that?
That's correct. When I started putting this plan together, I noticed that the transition, the gateway to the community from the north here was just horrible, and, and nobody would make the trip. And so what they would need to do is donate this acre right here, you probably can't see from where you are, but it's basically a pie-shaped thing for green space. And then we lowered the elevation here, this is effectively 13 feet below that, so that they have a nice little park area there, and then a ramp, if you will, that comes up like that, a natural ramp. And then, obviously, good, good massing is, is municipal and commercial together, and then you have small footprints that go out to larger footprints ever and ever present so that you have a population that will sustain these things locally. But I, I do believe that, and I can't speak to their plan, I do know that they've got the same amount of units, but they, they've eliminated some of the townhomes in exchange for single families, that's what I-
So this donation, though, was dependent on the zoning that's behind you? I mean, that's not a, that land hasn't been donated to you at this point?
No, but they, they, they're not being necessarily conditional. They, they, they want, they want a seat in this. Obviously, it would be in their best interest regardless of what happens.
But in terms of what I'm viewing, I'm looking, this view of the Whelan development is contemplating those zoning modifications? In terms of that density?
No, this is already green space right here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I'm looking to Mr. Wilson, because he knows the case that's coming before us. And again, I, I think we need to be cautious that we don't get into a zoning case, because this is indeed not a zoning hearing. I just wanted to make sure that when we look at this, is this the zoning as it relates to Fulton County and what was approved, or is this plan contemplating the Whelan zoning modifications that are coming before us and that have already been before us in the first presentation?
I think this plan is, can be accomplished with or without the zoning modification approvals. It does include, as JT said, a triangle that is dedicated to open space in the Whelan project. And so somehow we'll have to wrestle with that idea at some time in the future.
Like, is that-
It could be open space anyway.
Just some general comments. I appreciate you coming over here tonight and presenting your plan once again. I commend you for, you know, taking the initiative to come forward with a plan like this. And I'd, I'd encourage other developers to take the same initiative if they have the wherewithal to come forward with something like this. What we have here, I believe, is an opportunity, you know, to create an actual downtown community. I'll bring several examples. Most, and there are many others around this region here that have recreated a downtown area. Take Smyrna, that Bill DeSain Aubin worked on here, Greenville, South Carolina, Duluth, and Swanee, that's just developed their area or redeveloped their area. They've taken existing downtown areas or commercial areas, essentially leveled them and started anew. And here we have development here that would be starting from scratch, essentially. So my thoughts are that I, I believe we need in a downtown area like this one where all of these different facilities complement each other, whether it's this one here or across the road or up in Birmingham, crossroads, or wherever it may be. I think in order to meld our sense of community here, I believe we really need a downtown area to make this whole area complete and make it the city of Milton, not just another huge suburb of Atlanta.
Also, I want to say, I, I have a scowl on my face because I've got too many of these. I don't mean to come across that way. I'm not my typical, he said passionate, I'm like, I feel like I'm, I'm actually being a drag on things, but I do apologize for that.
Mayor, just one other thought, and JT, I know that I have asked you this question, and I'll just ask it again this evening. I know that part of your plan doesn't necessarily have to contemplate more density. I mean, right now, there's a master plan in Crab Apple that allows for 100,000 of commercial and 100,000 of office in a certain amount of high-density homes. And it was my understanding that a downtown area, whether that includes the library, doesn't include the library, includes City Hall, doesn't include City Hall, is that there's an opportunity to still develop this parcel and still to do it with green space and still to do it with great architecture, because you've already seen that happening, but that it doesn't necessarily have to contemplate more density that was in set-in-motion density for other areas. And I just wanted to make sure that, that we didn't lose sight of that, because this obviously contemplates a whole host of different things that, that will take a tremendous amount of analysis beyond this evening. But it, it's my understanding that you can still develop a downtown area and still have some massing and still be perhaps in line with some of the zoning in the master plan, that it doesn't have to be all or nothing, I guess, is my point.
No, I, I don't disagree with you. I will say this about that. We just need to ask ourselves the question, what do we want as a city? And if we want to be the extension of Roswell Road and Beaufort Highway, then we can be there. If we want to be, if we want a community performing arts center, and we want to have that opportunity to go and see, you know, plays and things of that nature, or, or musicals or what have you, then, then we should have one. If we want a library, fortunately the bond referendum went through, we should have one. If, if, if we want a B&amp;B center, a conference center, or a City Hall, or whatever, we should have one. In other words, we should certainly consider the density elements that are already in place, but what, what do we want as a, as a community? Who do we want to be? I just, I've been doing this a long time, and I, I've seen areas disappear, and it would break my heart to see all these, these horse farms disappear. But that's what's going to happen when the tax burden gets too much and people start cutting it up, and we're going to have a bunch of residential neighborhoods with no identity. And I'm trying to put something together that would allow people to have a sense of home here. I've talked about this before, and forgive me, but my wife, Spencer Summers, down in Beaufort, South Carolina, because they have a downtown. The candy store knows my kid's favorite candy, and he makes sure it's there. The, the person in the Civil War bookshop knows my name. He calls me on the phone, "JT, I got a great title for you. Bill, your historian's going to love it." We don't do that in this town. And, and it's not because we don't have good people, there are wonderful people in this town, but we don't have a sense of place. And, and, and that's just my opinion, and you can disagree with me, but, but I, I do know that having a viable downtown that's attractive, that people come to, they will find the, the respite in the interior attractive because they've got all these other services here.
Okay, and again, I want to stress, and I can certainly thank Mr. Adams. I think this is a wonderful vision that he has, and, and I'm, again, not saying that, you know, we would all support it, we would not. This is, this is a schematic and preliminary, and, you know, it's a much bigger question and, and a lot of stuff to work through if, as we move forward, and, you know, until something's formally presented, we can't really what-if and, and ask all these questions tonight. But, and answered some of the, the public's comments, too, on the process, once we, in the next presentation, we'll be on the proposed City Hall building. And we go out for RFPs, and you may have JT bring something like this to us. There may be five other people that have land or developers in a different area that they'll bring something and, and show us. And kind of the neat way that it typically works is, let's say we get five parties interested, and they present a proposal, we'll separate it into envelopes, and put your proposal and your schematics and everything you're proposing on, in one envelope, put your pricing in another envelope, so that we can take those proposals and look at them and not look at them because this is the cheapest or this is the most expensive, but we can look at them open-minded and say, "This really looks like it'd be the best for the city," or "this wouldn't." And then after you kind of rank them, then, then you go over and look at prices. What you like to do is, hopefully, it's, the one you like the most would be the most economical, but maybe it's the second one. And then those, those are things you have to weigh with input. Okay, you know, here's the, the cheapest way we can do it, but will the city get more use out of it if we go with the second, second price or the second higher price or something like that? So, you know, it's a lot of, it's a, a long process, isn't it, Ken? But a, as Ken said before, we're, you know, somebody else could bring a proposal from some land on Highway nine here and draw in the City Hall and the library and, and all that, too. So again, we're, we're going to commit that, that we're, as a city, as, as elected officials, we're going to go through the right process and, and try our best to make the best decision for the city, you know, from, from cost to what actually benefits the city more and what the citizens will get use, and, and, you know, the character and, and long-term, looking down the line for future generations. So I'll leave it at that. But Karen, if you want to add one more thing?
Yeah, I want to thank you, JT, for being willing to come tonight. I, I get questions almost on a daily basis about people who've heard about this plan, and I think you've hopefully answered some questions. This is the first time a lot of people in the council have seen it. I guess one question I still have is, we've known Crab Apple plan was broken for a while. Buck will be the first one who was very integral, and it has, you know, has said for two years, three years now, it needs to be updated, and I've been working on trying to get that update done. Even got a grant two and a half years ago that we still haven't spent all of because we had the, we're behind on the comprehensive plan itself. But we may not know for six months to a year where City Hall's going to go. And the library board and the Board of Commissioners, they may not know for six months or so where they're going to put the library, which we have no say-so whatsoever on. You've got a foundation that's willing to put some money into this, and it's going to need an answer at some point in time that we can't get it, because we don't know that answer yet, because we haven't gone through our steps to determine that answer, and Fulton County may not have gone through their steps to determine that answer. Is the answer you give them have to wait on hours, or is it something that you can go ahead and, and they would be willing to go forward with, with something before getting answers that we may not be able to give them for a year?
Well, I, I think they would probably just appreciate some kind of time-bound schedule that you guys could put together as to the process. Again, and I mean this sincerely, the, the RFP process is excellent for the overall result, and it doesn't matter, you know, who gets the ultimate prize necessarily, but, but that all the needs of the community are met, or at least as many of them as can be. So I, I think the matter certainly is with respect to time. The only thing that I think's been frustrating for them right now is there's really no process in place. And speaking to Mayor Lockwood's point there, none of us have ever done this before, and so we just need to investigate that. The needs analysis, I think, is going to be productive with respect to, to find out what we need from City Hall, and then everybody around here can, can decide what they want as a community. And if, if it's decided they don't want it downtown, even though it would be virtually free, then, then I, you know, I would respect the decision, I would, I would even disagree.
But if they know that we've got a timeline, that we're going to be looking at City Hall going through these steps over the next six to nine months, then-
I think they just understood the process, that would be-
I, I think we can commit to a, a process fairly soon, after we, we tie up this next item, and, and we can get together, and we can at least commit to a, a time that proposals will go out, and then an expected time, you know, couldn't, couldn't commit to a decision, but can commit to a time when a, the process that would happen, and then the time when a decision would be made, and we, I'm sure we could do something like that.
I've spoken to them about the various things that I want to do with respect to the, the history guild, and we have feature films, and, and we're working on a couple of book projects, we're actually rewriting history books and things like that, and we just would reorder a few.
And Tom, I know the Crab Apple Master Plan has been in the capital budget, the update for that for two years now. Is that something that we expect, is it still in our budget? Is that something we expect to be able to get done within the next year?
There were a couple of things with, that dealt with Crab Apple, and the Crab Apple intersection improvement was included in the comp plan, I believe?
Remember Jan Jones helped us get a $15,000 grant for that. That was the, at the beginning of the comp plan process, there was a lot of interest in Crab Apple, and we actually spent that $15,000 at the very beginning of the comp plan process in that preliminary Crab Apple study. Is there other information, I mean, if there's other money in the budget this year, we'll have to take a look at that page. I don't think there is.
Because Alice had said that there wasn't money in the budget to actually update the Crab Apple Master Plan.
There is actually money, probably enough money in the comp plan budget to update the Crab Apple plan.
Because that $15,000 was supposed to be used for an update to the Crab Apple Master Plan.
We spent it, right, we did that.
But we don't have an update to the plan, we just got-
Well, we got what we got for that $15,000, and it, we asked them to do, as I recall now, we asked them to do some preliminary update to the Crab Apple plan. He'd made some recommendations on that, they never really went anywhere, but that was part of the money that we spent upfront. Having said that, there is money left in the comp plan budget, which I suppose we could say that was the $15,000 that was there. There will be money left at the end of the comp plan process, and how you want to deploy that money will be up to you.
And Mayor, my understanding was that the CPAC Committee, I mean, obviously, we're still in the midst of our comprehensive land use plan, and I don't think anything has changed. I mean, and, and I do- I mean, and I do appreciate JT's perspective on Crab Apple. Obviously, he cares very much about the area, but I believe that the current process that we're within, and I think that we owe it to that process and the folks that have been involved now for almost two years, including the citizens, we need to see that process continue to come to fruition, which involves our CPAC committee and the folks that have been part of that committee to come through that end state. And I think that if I recall correctly, the $15,000 that was expended initially, they did provide an analysis. That analysis indicated that at this time, meaning at that time, that they were not recommending increased density within Crab Apple, that the current master plan was to remain intact until the comprehensive land use plan came to fruition and that if any density were to go beyond that $100,000, $100,000, it needed to happen as a part of the comprehensive land use planning process. And so I just think that we need to make sure that we're not losing sight of some of the commitments and processes that we already agreed to as a council. And while this process is, you know, it takes time, is that we don't suddenly start to shortchange those processes that we've already committed to because I think then we start to lose sight of fiduciary responsibility and process, et cetera. So everything that's worthwhile obviously takes time, but I do want to respond to the fact that this obviously contemplates only some of the parcels of Crab Apple. And legally, and I think Mr. Gerard, you would perhaps agree, that we can't have one-off decisions about a portion of Crab Apple that would set in motion. I mean, we could, but I don't think it would be in our best decision-making. We need to contemplate the whole of Crab Apple so that we don't set in motion negative legal precedent, given that in particular, we've already denied certain rezonings because of zonings, et cetera. So I just think we need to tread very carefully and be very mindful of a thoughtful thorough process that hopefully we continue to pursue.
Tina, you want to say something?
Thank you. Just a comment to correct a comment that you may have heard here tonight. The public process for the selection of the public library for the city of Milton is very open. They are very much interested in hearing your comments. We've had a lot of response from folks. It's been very helpful to me to hear what your thoughts are, where you'd like to see the library. I would encourage you to continue to send your comments. John Zabo, who heads up the library board for Fulton County, was here with us a month ago. I wish that we had had a room this filled when he was here, but, you know, they very much want to still hear your comments. I had two calls from two Fulton County commissioners today. They very much want to hear your comments. And it's very helpful to us, I think I speak for most everyone on the council, to hear from you and hear what your thoughts are, where you'd like to see these public facilities. There are a number of sites on Highway nine in addition to this site that's in Crab Apple and they're doing tremendous due diligence. I'm very impressed with it with regard to that library board. So continue to send your comments to John Zabo. If you don't have the contact information for the commissioners or him, send me an email and I'll send it to you.
Thank you. And again, just so we can separate this two, thank you, Mr. Adams, because obviously he's just presenting what his property is. CPAC will be involved, planning commission going forward. So it's really two separate things right now, but this is your vision and we thank you for presenting it. I think it's a wonderful vision. Obviously, we've got a lot of work to do before we make any decisions moving forward, so we'll just move forward. Thank you very much. The city clerk, please stand on the next item.
Item number three is an update on the space needs analysis by Mr. Roland Davidson of Lyman Davidson &amp; Dooley.
Again, my name is Roland Davidson and I'm with Lyman Davidson &amp; Dooley and we're an architectural firm. And I wanted to take a brief comments about how we came here and how we have started this process. We do have a PowerPoint and I don't know if there's someone who can maybe check on dimming these banks of lights right above the projection there because I think right now we're getting a lot of glare. Is there anybody who could check the lights? Anyway, I want to back up just a little bit on about how Lyman Davidson &amp; Dooley came to be the consultant working with the city. The city did a very thorough job. They put out a, thank you, I think that'll be great, put out an RFQ for qualifications. We worked through a process of submittal of qualifications and proposals with a selection committee and that committee reported to mayor and council. And I think this is our, really our first formal presentation to this group. So I wanted to take just a moment to introduce ourselves as a company so everybody can get a little bit of an overview of what we do and introduce our team. This is Nelson Ruiz here with me. He is our director of design. Robert Smith, would you please stand, Robert? Roberts with Gleeds International and he is our cost consultant to make sure that we know what this future facility would cost. So with that, we're going to start running through the slides. Lyman Davidson &amp; Dooley was, and I hope everybody can read this from that distance. We were formed in 1988, so we are about 21 years old. And just for the record, I started when I was about 10, so do the math, you know, you can figure that out. We do architecture, planning and interior design only. And what that means is we, when we do full architectural services, we'll bring in a full team of engineers and other consultants like Gleeds in order to round out the team. And we have a government studio and that studio is focused on doing this type of work with cities, counties, state government agencies and federal agencies. And we have offices located across the southeast US. I wanted to run real quick through our studios because each one of our studios does a specialized type of work and we won't go through this very long. We have a church studio that does religious structures, a recreation studio that works for cities and counties doing their recreation facilities such as aquatic centers and community centers and rec centers for their parks. And then we have a healthcare studio that does medical facilities, surgical centers, medical office buildings. And then a corporate studio that does more corporate office-type work. Interior design studio, which really crosses the boundaries for all our projects because as we do the exterior building shells, we'll end up doing interior spaces such as mayor and city council chambers and those kind of facilities. And then a mixed-use studio that does mixed-use developments that you have just recently seen a version, a site plan for, that type of work. Our education studio does primarily higher education work and also some K through 12 projects. And then our government studio, which is really represented in here tonight. So we've got a couple of examples of that type of work that we do. This is a project in Newton County where we did the county administration offices here. We did their master plan concept for a community theater building and then an outside hotel element to support that facility. This is some of the design studies early on and then you can see an actual, this is, it looks like a photograph, but it isn't. It's actually a computer-generated model that is superimposed onto the site so that the client could actually visualize what the project looks like before it's built. And then this is the final built version. And then this next slide shows the interior lobby of that facility. This is the Bartow County Civic Center. It's another, you know, public facility. It's going to have an auditorium and conferencing center and meeting rooms in it. And then the next slide is the city of Douglasville, it's a study for a conferencing center for their downtown. And then that leads us into the process for your all's future city hall. And I think this is a very exciting process because really this is a historical precedent and not often in our communities and today's are we creating a new city. And you guys have an opportunity to really, to create a new city. And this is very exciting. It's exciting architecturally because I think all communities are defined by their architecture. And I think certainly the vision of this group and what the city of Milton will be, will be represented by this architecture. So it's really quite exciting. So how do we get into the programming and what programming is? It's really understanding what goes in the project. And so we have worked with the city manager and staff and interviewed all the departments and we've come up with a detailed list of each space in the building and assigned square footages to it. Now, you can't read that document, but we have handouts that we will give mayor and council that will allow you to review that. And so what, going through that process, we've developed each department and we have assigned the square footages and then, as Robert's going to share with us in a little bit, start looking at the cost of that square footage. Next slide.
Now, in the future phase, we'll also be doing, we have been doing a lot of research in terms of how city hall works and at some point we'll be doing research as to how similar government buildings looks in terms of bringing, coming up with a design that all of you will be very proud of. That is not part of our scope, however. As part of the research that we did for the planning analysis, we did visit Duluth City Hall and it's a very nice traditional building that has a nice circular fountain up front. When we got there, when I took this picture, it was early in the morning, it was empty. By the time we had taken the tour, that was full of kids, a lot of activity. It was joyous laughter to be heard. The interior of Duluth City Hall, it was very nicely done, a lot of nice wood trim, traditional columns, grand stairs, cornices, chandeliers, et cetera, et cetera. A couple of points, no building is perfect. I'm going to highlight a couple of the things that we learned from both Duluth and Suwannee and then later I will show you how we applied them to your design. One of the things that Duluth did really well is, once you go into the central lobby, you have an easy-to-see reception desk, which you cannot see in these pictures unfortunately. And then beyond that, you can see the doors at the bottom actually go to the finance, city clerk offices where citizens visiting city hall can do their business in private in a nice setting. And that was a very nice point. At the top of these, both of these stairs, they also had a large conference room that is fairly well-used by the staff and that is another detail that we decided to imitate in your plan. The council chambers themselves are also very nice. This one is actually smaller than what we're planning for you because this, yours, will include a courtroom. So what we, you will see in the plan is actually more in keeping with the size of what you presently have. This one is smaller, however. It was very nicely detailed with wood panels. On the top left photograph, you can also see that they had a projection screen, a large projection screen that came down behind the council members and a projection, overhead projector that came down from the ceiling that unfortunately, most of you cannot see from this far away, but that works very well. And then at the back, you can see they had a little clock on the entrance to the actual council chambers. One thing they did not do so well in this building is that this space is not directly connected to the entrance lobby. You have to go down the corridor. We thought that was not nearly as functional as could have been and we are showing a more direct connection from the central lobby to our, to your council and courtroom space. Their interiors in general were very high-quality, lots of wood trim around the doors, nice wood bases, columns in some places that, I don't know, it was a little bit overkill, to be honest. A lot of side lights next to all the doors, very nice. Of course, both of these buildings are actually more expensive than what we are proposing to do than what we really think you need to do in this facility. Suwannee City Hall was, had also some good points. There you can see a photograph of their fountain also in front of city hall. And as you can see, it was full of kids, very lively, very active. Both of these city halls at the front lawns in front of the entrance, it gave us a civic welcoming and grand setting for the city hall itself. This one in particular had a lot of expensive marble on the outside. It sort of looks like a traditional train station, you know, it's okay. Their two-story lobby is actually bigger. They also have two grand stairs, a lot of marble on the floor, wood panels, et cetera, et cetera. However, this one, they do go to a second-floor council chambers, which was kind of interesting. They took advantage of the barrel vault that they express on the outside. I thought the interior was a little bit modern, but what really did not work is that when you are, a citizen is visiting this facility and you're actually trying to do business, you actually have to stand in one of those little windows right next to the whole lobby and actually talk about paying your water bill or whatever it is you have to do. We thought that was perhaps not as well thought out as it could. A little detail that they did have in the actual council chambers, that all the monitors, instead of having PC screens in front of each council desk, they had them recessed into the countertop with a glass top. I thought that is something we would certainly want to imitate. And here is the first-floor plan. In our plan, we basically have the courtroom, we have the main lobby, we have a separate lobby for the court use as opposed to the main lobby. We have the municipal court spaces, office areas over in the top-right corner. We have public safety at, right there. Now, public safety in this building, let me point out, is nothing more than the police chief and the fire marshal plus their top aides. We are not planning on having the fire station or the police station. Those are planned for, as I understand it at this moment, for a different site for some of the reasons that were previously discussed in this meeting. In this floor, we also have public works, community development, and those two departments have a chaired reception lobby. We are proposing a second floor that will have the finance department, it will have the city clerk, records and communications, the administration department, IT and human resources. Now, I'd like to go into a little bit more detail as to how this will work by going into these diagrams. In this diagram, you have highlighted the main entrance going into the lobby with the reception desk to the right, the public restrooms to the left. You will go through into a rotunda space. Once you get to the rotunda space, you can either go to the reception area for the community development and public works on the left, or you can go to the finance, city clerk, cashier's office for most of every day needs. Now, if you need to go to the second floor, there's also an elevator right off the rotunda that will take you upstairs to the departments above for daytime visitors. A separate use that is not, was not actually, did not actually happen in neither Duluth or Suwannee is the fact that you plan to have a courthouse. So one thing that we are providing different from either one of those is that we have a separate courthouse lobby space and to get, that will have a separate entrance with, how do you call it, a security pass-through and a desk. how do you call it, a security pass-through and a desk. And on the back, you have the courthouse spaces and...
Can I add one more?
Yes.
Comment here. In our discussions with staff and reviewing the needs, obviously, there's a need for city council chambers in order to have public meetings and what have you. There's also a very distinct need for the municipal court. And so, in order to be cost-effective, rather than building two separate spaces for those two functions, we are proposing to make a joint space that will serve both functions. So, if you hear us talking about that space in two different manners, it's because it's a very cost-effective way for a city to handle both of its functions. It's rarely scheduled at the same time. Obviously, it's, the more use you get out of this space, the better use for the taxpayers. So, that, that's our proposal.
Now, this layout actually, oh, this is a photo, no, I went the wrong direction, sorry. Now, this is a public access for council meetings. In this situation, which would mostly happen at night, you will have the visitors having access to both the main public lobby and to the courthouse lobby, and all of those will act as a pre-function to the council meetings. At the same time, there is a spot in between the main public lobby and the rotunda. That, that, those doors would be locked, or could potentially be locked during council meetings, so that staff can enter the building through the rear access, which will lead you to the employee parking spaces in the back, and will give you access to the large executive conference room. That would be a pre-council meeting space that could also be, is big enough to have a square table similar to what you have right here, plus a few visitors for functions in which some visitors would be possible. That is something that we copied or that we saw and liked in Suwannee, but that they did not have in Duluth. Duluth had just a much smaller pre-council desk for only 12 people and a handful of chairs. What we are providing is a lot bigger and nicer, and I think will give you a lot more possibilities for other functions in that size space. And finally, we are showing a site plan. This site plan is not site-specific. This is our best guess at this point as to the minimum-sized land that we believe you would need to provide, the parking required for this facility, to provide a very small park at the front with a fountain similar to the ones you see in both Suwannee and Duluth. Gives you a very small, but potentially useful expansion space on the left of the building, and also a little bit of potential expansion for the parking that would be on either side of the fountain, and of course, that would only happen if you ever decide to expand this building. At this point, you add the, the other site requirements, and you have about five acres of land. That is what we think you will need.
Could I add something to that? The five acres that we've looked at is what we think is a minimum just for the start out of that, and as you look at an RFP or whatever, obviously, cities grow, there are needs for additional buildings, whether it's public safety or fire or other type of thing. You may want them in proximity to the city hall, you may want them somewhere else within the city limits, but that's a minimum, and obviously, I think planning for the future is something that needs to be taken into account before you pick your final site.
And Robert, if you could join us and go through your work, please?
If I ask, do we have a hard copy? My eyes are a little worse than they used to be. And while I haven't invested in...
Mine, mine as well.
I've invested in reading glasses, so if we had any hard copy that we could look at, I think it would be a valuable use of our time.
We've had these, and we just didn't want to lose your attention.
You've got my, no, it'll help me pay more attention, actually.
Just for brevity's sake, I'm going to go ahead and start. I'm Robert Smith with Gleeds. We're a program management, cost management firm, have been working with Lyman Davidson-Dooly for a good number of years. In fact, we worked on the Newton County development with them, and the estimating that we did, we started out, and we like to start at the very beginning of a project like this when it's in very conceptual stages, so that we can get a feel for, for what, just as Roland and Nelson had expressed, a feel for what the, the users' needs are up front, and make sure that all those are considered in the costing. In this case, we, we used the document that Nelson had described previously, the programming document, which basically says how many square feet for each separate use. Each of those we considered and looked into our, we have metric, parametrics that come from previous projects that we've estimated and seen bid. Using those metrics, we've developed square footages for similar spaces as described in the programming document. So, when you see an office for an inspector, we would consider that as a standard office space. And then the courtroom space, that, that would be a very high-end space, on the other hand, with the offices, and it is a low-end space, and circulation space typically being hallways and stairwells, those being very low-cost spaces. So, with those metrics, we come up with a conceptual-type estimate, and that's what you see here today, is conceptual in nature. We've put in a provision for construction contingency along the way there. The design contingency is a proportion of these costs. And we've also considered the general contractor's fee and escalation to be zero between now and a projected start, second quarter of next year. Of course, that may well change. Who can really have that insight would, I'd like to talk to them, please, after this. At any rate, the resultant cost is $8,200,000 nominally for a space that's about 30,000 square feet. That would include both the capital construction cost as well as the FFNE space, excuse me, the FFNE furnishing, that's fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, like, like the chairs and the desks and stuff that you see here and that for your, for your building. This, again, is conceptual, very conceptual in nature. It was based on the drawings that you, the sketches that you saw as well as the programmatic documents. One thing to note during the Newton County, starting in early like this and being involved throughout the process, I believe what was, we were 1% or 2% off of the bid cost when it came in.
That's correct.
So, we were rather accurate in our studies. But it's important that this be done at each stage of, of the development. So, basically, that's the, that's the outline for the cost. The site, as Nelson stated before, is, is not specific to any site. The assumptions there were no rock, no water, no deep foundations, basically a flat greenfield site that we're talking about and developing, so, and no hazmat, things like that either. So, thank you very much.
I would add a couple of things. First of all, please note that these numbers are as accurate as we can get them at this stage of the, of, of the process. Once we go through the, the next phase and start doing more detailed plans in which you can see the actual room sizes for every small room, which obviously, I am not showing. I am showing spaces in the floor plans that represent the total square footage for each department, and not gone into any more detail because that's, that's enough for us to know that the building is going to be approximately this size, and it allows us to, to plan and to estimate an approximate cost. Once we start detailing and start doing elevations and, and designing this, and we have a site, et cetera, et cetera, the more work we do, the more closer we can get the estimate, the construction estimate, to the final bid price, assuming we go bid, et cetera.
And hand-in-hand with that, Nelson, that's a great point. The, the margin of error on conceptual nature estimates obviously are a lot greater than those on a, on a construction document estimate. Typical margins of error as published by ASTM, and those are around 20% at this stage of the game, plus or minus. Whereas in a CD, that's a construction document estimate, which is a fully detailed set of construction documents, you may find that the margin of error comes down to 3% to 5% at that stage. So, so bear that in mind. Thank you. Oh, yes, we have one more. This, another, excuse me. Yeah, it's in the book. It's kind of hard to read. This is, it was also requested in the RFP to, in our assignment, to, to do a conceptual projected annual facility and maintenance cost analysis. This has been done based on, again, metrics from real buildings that we've worked in, interviewed the, the users, whether they be with institutions or commercial facilities similar to this in nature. And again, these are, these are conceptual-level estimates. The energy estimate is probably the most accurate of all of these in that we, I sat down and basically went back and forth with the engineers that have produced similar designs for similar buildings, the Newton County facility, for example, and they actually did a lead modeling, a lead building modeling for, for lead analysis for, for energy. And using that model and extrapolating the square footage from that model, we came up with these, these estimates of consumption. These are for a typical rooftop unit scenario rather than a central energy plant scenario, and they're based on getting a price with Georgia Power or some other supplier being .085 kilowatts per hour of cost for that. So, that, the rest of these are typical maintenance and facility costs that you would see. The hardscape and landscape maintenance cost is the next in line, and basically, that's just, I'm sorry, excuse me. Cleaning is the next in line, and that was taken from quotes that I had from similar facilities, again, with, with companies that come in and do cleaning. Again, if you hire somebody, hire your own staff for that, it may be different. We can certainly look at that as, as you think about the different strategies of that. Hardscape and landscaping is basically maintaining that, mowing the grass, keeping your bushes up, and, and that kind of thing. Mechanical periodic and preventative maintenance and electrical, both of those are based on, pardon me, based on averages in the, in the, in this area, and they have to do with things like replacing the belts, maintaining your systems. This, these are averages for a life cycle for a building like this, which is between 30 and 50 years typically. These usually, you won't be seeing these kind of maintenance costs at the beginning of a, of a project, obviously. So, consider the fact that, that, you know, the first few years, you don't have this. It's just like a car, put those in the bank, save them for when you do have to maintain it, and, but this is more of a, of a life cycle average. And, and again, without going into too much detail, pest control is just that, having someone come in yearly to do, annually to do that. And the detention pond that's going to be on-site for water retention, stormwater retention will have to be cleaned out and maintained also, and that's, the $5,000 that's shown there is based on maintenance every five years for the ponds that are sized this. Thank you.
I would like to just walk you all through the booklet real quick. I apologize if I didn't handle them out ahead of time, but one of the things we wanted to draw your attention to is if you look at the first four or five pages, this is the programming document. This is really the meat of the study, and a lot of time that was put in with your own staff and the city manager, and they were great to work through this with us. And it's very detailed, and as you know, things change. We do have some growth protection in these numbers for office spaces and what have you, but I also know that Milton doesn't really want to grow. They want us to make things more growth, but be able to manage with a relative amount of design as possible, and I think your staff has done a good job of analyzing that. This just really requires some study, and we, and Milton Ward, who are, you know, to ensure this is done. But I will say, it also is a living document that will change as the needs of the city become further developed.
In fact, I would like to point out that originally, we came up with the first iteration of this program based on all the surveys and all the questions of all the staff. And then, once we actually started visiting a couple of the facilities, we saw some nice ideas that they had, that we incorporated and made revisions to it to show those as well. But nonetheless, as Roland just pointed out, do not, there will be changes to this, there will be some rooms that will be added, there will be some rooms that you may decide at some point you don't really need, or it could be a little smaller, a little bigger. We do think, however, that we're very close to what you would probably need in this facility, and that is the purpose of this exercise.
Now, if you'll move through to the floor plans, again, this is not meant to be a file architectural design, this is a study and space needs, that's what we were pushing to do. So, the relationships are very important, though, and then the flow and circulation and the functionality, so a lot of time is spent, I'm sure, that public spaces are public, and the workspaces are secure, protected, that the council has meeting areas, work areas, but they can also very quickly and efficiently move into the council chambers and meet with the public. So, there's a lot of functionality that have been fought through into what actually goes on which floor, which, which apartments are publicly used more often than the ones that are more producing the work and can be on the second floor and not create a lot of traffic. The next page, it says, again, the site plan that we talked about, and again, we're looking at some of the minimal square footage. It's kind of interesting to see the, the conceptual master plan that we showed earlier. There is a potential here in the city to create a new, and this will be my favorite anchor. If you look at any community historically, and that's the architecture that is the product of the city, and I think the opportunity here is, is there, it's going to be a very exciting project. Then, we finished out, again, with copies of the conferences right now, and we know already, so this is for y'all to review. Any questions?
I have a question. Thank you very much for this. Obviously, you've heard tonight, sitting in the audience, that this is where we should have started, but when, when you started out your presentation, you started with looking at other facilities, you know, similar-sized cities and concepts. Obviously, we're all, most of us have seen Suwannee, and I've taken a tour of it, it is, it's beautiful. They've done a great job over there. Did you have in mind, or were you given any dollar figures for what this facility and what Milton hoped to accomplish with this facility?
Not to my dollars. I think we started in that direction, is what are the basic needs, and obviously, there's some powerful things in the program, but if they're not a dollar, those things could be placed to a future phase or whatever. Another example, Newton County, we built, the building is 30% larger than it needed to be based on their program. For the whole future growth, Milton, so there's, you can even go that direction, too.
I'm just, I'm, I'm of the mindset that we don't need ostentatiousness. We don't need, we don't need a lot in Milton. I mean, the idea that we've been sharing council chambers and our municipal court now, you know, very, very successfully, you know, so I'm...
That is a great idea.
It's exactly what, you know, a city or a town like Milton needs, and, you know, as we move forward, we have to be mindful that we don't, we don't have any money, but we never profess to have money to build some, you know, tremendous city hall that would stand as a monument, and we want it to fit into Milton, so if it looked like a, you know, a horse arena or a horse facility or a horse farm, that'd be fine, I think, with most of our citizens, as long as they've got good, efficient services that they can come to, you know, to evaluate. So, anyway, I was just curious as to if you had a dollar figure.
Tina, I plan to address that, too, in a few minutes, too, so...
Okay.
Bill? Obviously, you based your program on a staff level, I believe, that we have right now.
I think there's...
It's based on a staff level, plus some expansion if...
Yeah, there are, there are some offices that you will see noted as being future expansion.
I see the both.
Right, right. There are some.
Looks like about another 150 square feet.
Yes.
It's a growth area.
It's going to be more than that. There's several offices and a space here and a space there, depending on the department, that are actually future.
So, what, what was the area that you calculated that you would need at this point in time? Would you start with?
The gross square footage is right around 30...
39, or 31...
It's around 31,000 square feet.
31,000, it's a change.
And, and that's really fairly close to what you need right now. We have provided... And that's really fairly close to what you need right now. We have provided a little bit of expansion, but you must, I would point out that Duluth has a whole third floor. This expansion, that's right now, is totally unfinished. And they have a basement that is potential for, that can be reused in a different way from what they're doing right now, which is, that's multipurpose space. Of course, that building is a lot bigger than what we're proposing here, and a lot more expensive than what we're proposing to do for you.
And maybe to.
Per square foot, per square foot.
I think it would be very easy to back out those future spaces if you want to look at today's current needs or ten-year needs or 20-year needs. By doing it in a spreadsheet format, we can come in, answer some of those questions, add some numbers, take some numbers out, and look at your budget.
So this 31,000 square feet is based on how much growth, or how much growth over what period of time?
It's hard to predict, but we've been working with staff. They made some recommendations on which areas they think would expand. And so I'd have to ask staff if they, you know, Chris was here, he could say, well, it's a 10-year projection, but it's hard to predict.
Right. So this total 31,000 square feet anticipates building out the entire 31,000 square feet?
Correct. Under the budget that we presented.
Right. Could you compare this with Swanee's and Duluth's and Smirnoff's cost?
Our discussions with those cities were that their construction budgets were around $300 a square foot. What we have budgeted is like 260, 265.
Including them.
Yeah, so.
But not including soft costs.
Yeah. So, so we're, you know, we're in an economy where we're, you guys know, I mean, the construction costs have come down. It's a great time to build. We have many clients who are saying, you know what, we can't afford it right now, but we can't afford to pass this up, because we'll never buy the construction any cheaper than we can in this market. So those.
Can you please, like, say that more often?
But there's, you know, there's a truth to that. Obviously, financing and money supply is tight, but because of that, we're, we're in an unprecedented area where construction costs are at a, maybe a 15-year low. So, you know, there's, there are advantages to moving forward.
You know, I certainly want to thank Roland and his firm. They've done an excellent job, did a lot of work, gave us a great value for our money. Thank Robert for putting some costs together. Nelson for working with us. We, it's kind of interesting, we'd go around and visit different city halls, and soon as you go in, everybody's got, this is the way it should be, this is the greatest. Then you go to the next, and it's totally different. They're like, this is the way it's got to be, this is the greatest. So we kind of got some good ideas from different areas. But I did want to address costs and all. And I think Tina may have asked, we didn't purposely give a dollar amount or whatever. Sometimes it's better to let them design for what they think ultimately you need, run some numbers, and then we may have to work backwards. We may have to scale back. We may have to, again, Milton City Hall doesn't need to be as fancy as some other ones. It can have a totally different look. So, and the other thing I want to, there's, a lot of the public has left tonight, but when you see the $8 million or whatever, and again, like I said, what we've got to do is work within our budget, and if we need to back it down, we do or whatever. But I don't want people to think that the city's entertaining going out and spending $8 million, or whether it's $6 million, or seven, or five additional money. What we have to do is take what we're existing right now, what we're leasing, and what we're spending monthly and yearly on a lease fee. We need to look at a project like this, whether we lease it, whether we lease to own it after a certain time, whether we purchase it or whatever. And we, as a council, need to, and I feel committed to this, we need to make sure that whatever we do is as cost effective as possible, so that we're not actually spending more money than we're spending now. So again, I don't want people to get the idea when they see a big number like that, that we're going out spending additional money. Whatever we do, we would amortize it to hopefully be within, or maybe less, or, you know, a close range of what we're spending now. So for our budgets and whatnot, it would not be spending additional money, if that makes sense. So, but thank you, guys.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Before they go away, can I ask a couple of quick questions?
Please.
Just, so basically, the 31,000, that's a two-story, so the footprint's actually closer to 15,500 square feet, correct? This is a two-story model. Did you also contemplate a one-story model, or is the two, I know that at one point, I think that you were looking at both. Obviously, with two stories, sometimes it's more cost efficient.
Yeah, there's, to answer that, first of all, the council chambers are a little bit larger volume, so that's not a true two-story split. So that second floor was probably more of about 60% of the square footage of a true split.
Okay.
To do a single-story building, you save the cost of an elevator, which is not a huge amount, but you do say that you'd probably reduce some stairs, but you eat up more land.
More land.
So now your land cost goes up. So what we're finding is there's a cost efficiency in your land cost that justifies the two-story. And we also felt like to balance the mass of the council chambers, we needed a little bit of a mass in terms of the entry lobby and the second-story space. And we think, you know, a city, you know, hall should have a presence and a mass. And a two-story building would do a little bit more of that than a building like this, which is sort of a business park kind of look.
Right. In addition to just the footprints, so the footprint's not that 15, and maybe some from tonight, we get a better sense of what that footprint would be specifically, whether that's a 60 split from that first story. The other is, within the growth projections, if we can, again, sever from tonight, get a better sense of what that growth would be, so we could better understand what would be needed. Going back to fire and police, I know that, you know, there's different schools of thought depending on the need. And obviously, in Milton, we've got different needs for police and fire. Just from a land perspective as well, though, when we look at the need for a fire station and/or a police presence in other areas, did any of your analysis to date include some analysis of what the incremental cost would be if we did want to co-locate either a portion of, I mean, not necessarily a fire engine, but just, did you go down that path? And if so, could we get that data?
Not really. I mean, the direction coming from staff was that that was not the direction to go in. The police, the chief of police and the fire marshal would be responding and reporting to the city manager. And there's a, you know, precedence for having them close, so it's a management issue. But the actual location of the fire station really is based on where your needs are, and the insurance ratings, and those kind of things. And same for police.
I'll jump in there, too. And Chris is not here to explain, but more along the thinking of, you want to put the police in the fire station where it's actually needed within the city to make sure we got the coverage. I think there was a citizen that mentioned something tonight. So it didn't necessarily make sense that we have the fire station or police precinct, you know, connected in the city.
And I sure understand that. I think at this point, since we just don't know what those various options are, I guess my question would be, however, if you ended up looking at other options for a city hall that also happened to need a fire presence, would we be able to effectively reduce our cost if you were to look at, A, the cost of a city hall, and B, the cost of a fire station as two separate locations? Conversely, what that cost would be, compare and contrast it with what would it be if you actually combined those, if indeed it ever ended up someplace where you needed that service as well? And I think there'd be some efficiencies, if indeed that was one of the places that you considered. So I just think that through this process, even if it's back of the envelope, I'd like to at least understand what, what the cost assessment would be if we looked at them as two completely separate locations. And then, in comparison, how, what it would look like if you then had, you know, 20% more land, but could also co-locate, because there are some cost efficiencies in that scenario.
And I think as the land parcels are looked at, there may be just a natural inherent savings in buying a larger tract of land. Now, if you take, for example, a fire and put it as a single structure with the city hall, now you've got a noise issue with the sirens.
Sure. And I don't think single.
Council be going on. But a separate building on a larger tract of land.
Right.
You could probably buy the acreage cheaper. I mean, it's going to be a very site-specific thing, but I think it's worth looking at.
And so I guess my only point was that through this process, is knowing that we're not looking at just a singular site, I think, for a thorough analysis, those would at least be some details that would be helpful. And again, it may be that we never determined that it needs to be co-located, but I think without knowing those potential costs, it's hard to know whether or not that's something that we should indeed at least contemplate when we start looking at upwards of $10 million or more.
Yes. And I, and I think one of the things that needs to be studied as maybe the next phase of this study, as proposals come in for land purchase or development or whatever, that some test fits be done independently of those RFPs that can show what can work most effectively for the city. So, you know, I think because this is a non-site specific feasibility study, that's a very critical part of not only utilization of the land, but how does it work within the infrastructure of the road systems of the city and where the populace lives? And there's a lot of issues in this site selection.
Right. And I do realize that fire and police wouldn't make, it'd make sense in all cases. In some locations, if we're looking citywide, they could. So just one thought. Also, when you talk about the five acres, when you come back, or when we get some more detail, Mayor, as to what those growth projections include, and I know that Mr. Lauderblin would be able to address that if he was with us, but in addition to five acres of land, how much additional land might we need? And maybe Stacy, you can address this, but how much additional land might we need in that sort of a growth phase? And then how would that land parlay, if we were looking at an option that would include fire and police? Those would just be things that I would be interested in seeing. And again, I know we're not going to get these answers tonight, but I think that's the purpose of this work session, is to at least say what additional data might be helpful. With regards to open space, and I'm looking at this, looking at 1.9 acres, is that contemplated as contiguous? Is part of that 1.9 part of the parking, are those part of those landscaping components? Or is it all contiguous? So the parking?
Well, again, our goal was to create the most efficient layout.
Sure.
Possible, so we could get to that minimum acreage requirement, flat piece of land, no contours, no issues. And, and the green space, again, is not necessary if you wanted to go small.
No, I love green space. I just wanted to understand whether or not the green space was including some of those parking islands, or if it was true dedicated green space.
And again, depending on what your contiguous land uses are, we have buffer zones, and so it's really hard to tell. We're just trying to help set a target. So as you start to write your proposals for, you know, development deals or land purchases, that kind of thing, you have sort of a minimum standard.
And let me jump in, too, just to make sure everybody's clear. As Roland used the term, phase two or whatever, we've got to keep in mind, this is basically a phase one study, very preliminary, nonspecific. The next phase would be going out and getting proposals. And gosh, when you get proposals, you get so much stuff back, and you've got to go through, and you'll get great ideas here, great ideas here, and whatnot. So again, they really can't be expected to answer any questions like that. We've got to come back, you know, and get next, our next level of information, and then, you know, engage these guys or someone else to take it to the next step. So really, I don't know that you could be expected to answer many more questions other than, you know, what's your specific proposal here, but.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to ask, because within the proposal, thank you, Mayor, it does include that 1.9. So just, again, I don't expect the answer this evening, but it would be helpful to know if that 1.9 is a dedicated green space, or if 20% of that 1.9 are the island, things of that nature, which I think you would have that data.
I think the answer would be, when we get proposals back, maybe one proposal's got two and a half acres of green space. One proposal won't have anything, because there's not enough land. So those are the kind of questions we'll have to work together and ask ourselves what we really want.
And I think if we were making a recommendation, you know, here, your city, you're new, you're creating a new history for the city, you know, I would say you need to look at 10, 15, 20 acres to really create, you know, and this other plan kind of had it inherently in there, but maybe you do it as the, as the city. So some of the examples that Bill suggested, City of Smartop, some of these other cities, they came in, purchased every tract of land in their downtown and started over. And if you look at these communities, they have completely reinvented themselves into a downtown area that's walkable, it's livable, it's green space, it's fountains, has the whole sense of town. And I think Milton's got its own sense of character. And, you know, she mentioned the horse barns and that kind of thing. I grew up in central Kentucky, and I mean, there's no bigger horse country in the world. And if there is a place, there's a sense of that in that area. And I think it really speaks a lot to what Milton could become in terms of its vernacular and how those starts to come together. Because I think it, as a village, as opposed to a dense downtown area, it needs to be more of a village, walkable type idea. And that, it takes some land and all that to breed. And it's going to be a very exciting process. And I think you all got a chance to create really something special.
Again, thank you very much for your time tonight, your proposal. Robert and Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor.
So.
Okay. Well, our city clerk, please say on the next item.
Item number four is discussion on the FY10 budget. Ms. Stacy Englis.
Before I do that, I actually did an email, Chris, the question about the expected growth, you know, what projections we went out. He said he's lost contact with us. Cell Service, Internet Service, where he is, is in and out. But he wanted to let you know it was, it was a 10-year growth, he thinks. If he went back, he thought that we would discuss a 10-year growth model.
Stacy, you're on stage.
I know, I'm getting there. All right. This, the document that you have, it's a living document, so it changes. So it has changed since the last council meeting. I have the new changes in your packets, but I know that some of you did not bring your computers. And so I did print out some copies. I've already passed those out. So, yes, that packet right there. While you're getting that out, I'm going to just kind of have a brief little discussion about how we're going to do tonight's discussion. I'm going to take you through each department to discuss the budget request for maintenance and operating capital requests and other fund requests pertaining to that particular department. I ask that if you have questions about that department, please ask them at that time, because everybody wants to go home to their families. And so I'll, you know, we can dismiss the department heads whenever we finish with our departments. And if you have any detailed questions afterwards, if they leave and you have any detailed questions, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability, but I might have to get back with you on.
Can I, can I ask a question, Stacy? Would you prefer us to put our questions in writing, or would you prefer them tonight, you know, kind of passed upon?
We can try to answer them tonight. I think that was kind of the purpose of the work session, because we do want to have some feedback on what you think of the document and what you think of the budget request. And if I can't answer them tonight, if you would, please write them, write them down and email them to me, because I won't be able to take notes.
Right. That's what I was thinking, and with Chris not being here, too.
Okay. I'm waiting for Karen, I think, to open up her budget document.
Sorry, I had the old one up, so I got to get the new one up.
Sorry about that. And for those of you that have your budget doc, or your computers, you can, when you get open in there, you can click on the little bookmark, and I have everything tabbed. So as we're going through this, you can click on the different links, and it takes you right straight to the page that I'm discussing. Let me get there. All right. The first thing we'll, we'll talk about is revenues. I don't have a presentation tonight. This is a very informal discussion. I'm not going to do any kind of presentation. Did you lose it? I don't know. So for starters, let's talk about revenues. The change from the original document was the, was a total amount of appropriated revenues. It went up slightly to about $15,000. And that is basically for re-appropriating funds for the Highway Nine Design Guidelines. And so it went up $15,000 to what you saw last week. For the most part, revenues remain flat in comparison to 2009. If you exclude the almost $4.2 million in Fulton County SSD money that we received last year, the total projected revenue for fiscal year 2010 went up by approximately $600,000. And this is due largely to the consideration that prior year property taxes will be greater than fiscal year 2009, because we're building so much later this year. And I still haven't gotten any news on the 2009 digest. I've been calling all day long today to find out some news about that, and I still do not have anything.
Well, let me make sure I understand it. So it's greater, but it's really only greater because we're having to reduce current year, because we're billing so late that we're not going to receive the taxes in the current year, so we're getting them in next year.
Right.
So overall.
Overall, it equals out to be pretty flat. Beyond the summary sheets for the revenues, you'll find separate worksheets for each of the revenues. of the revenue sources. And these worksheets show you the collection history by month and fiscal year. And my goal is to incorporate this information into a new revenue book so that you can have a description of the revenue source along with the history. I know I presented a revenue book to you, I believe it was last year, and I'm going to update that with this information. All right. So, moving on, do you have any questions about revenues before I move on?
One quick question on the insurance premium, the $850,000. Do we anticipate that to be flat every year? You don't anticipate that fluctuating?
Well, unless our population projections go up, I don't anticipate that.
And I guess that's the reason for my question because it seemed that some of our, we've had variations in population and depending on which population figure you believe, it could be that that figure would be modified. I'm all about conservative projections, but it might at least be worthy of us just verifying that that original fee and the actuals are consistent with those two different population figures.
Right, and we have to get the U.S. Census Bureau to state the population figure. And once that is done, we can turn that into the Insurance Commissioner's Office.
I have one other question, Stacy. I know last year, a lot of people paid the apartment taxes online and we just ate the fee. We're all, we're most of the other cities and counties, 3% or 1.5% or whatever they actually charge the residents. Have we made a decision on that for this year?
We were looking into a solution for that. The solution was to use a different credit card company. And at the time that they presented their proposal to me, they did not have the ability to do online credit card payments. So, we were kind of waiting on them to see, or we're going to go out tomorrow to see if there's any other solution that we can do. I do realize that taking credit cards or accepting credit cards is a convenience for both the end user and for us, or for the customer and for us. So, you know, we're looking at different options.
How much did that cost us so last year fees?
We'll get to that when you get to the finance department. Okay? Anybody other, have any other questions about revenues before I move on?
I do. I know that last year, we had an overstatement of revenue tied to some of our, like the GTC stations, some of our substations and things.
Utility tax?
And the utility tax. And I know that that had gotten corrected. Do we feel pretty confident, assuming that you do, but I want to ask that question just knowing that that's one that we had needed to review before. But do we feel that utility tax is consistent now with what we've experienced?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I brought it down. I think it was at $500,000, I brought it down to $52,000.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to expenditures, before we get started on them, allow me to take a moment to thank our department heads. They've done a great job in managing their current budgets and in being conservative with the fiscal year 2010 request. So, I believe they all understand the constraint that we are under whenever it comes to finances. And they submitted pretty much what the department needs. And so, that made it very difficult whenever Chris and I were going through the budget and trying to prioritize and fund these requests because we knew the department really needed them. So, I did want to thank you, department heads, for doing that. In the mayor and council budget, included in this budget are the salaries and benefits for the seven of you as well as your training, travel and supplies. There were no new initiatives in MNO budget. The only capital project that falls in your department is the City Hall needs assessment that is currently underway. And there's no new funding that was appropriated for that project in the coming year. So, did you have any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I know that this current year, we received an increase of $720 in our stipend to get an air card. And do we have any indication of how the council did with regard to the stipend and can we reduce that 720 if it was determined that we in fact didn't need it?
Sure, that's one thing we can definitely look at. I didn't include actuals in this, but I can, I can provide you an answer later on with that. So, any other questions before I move on? Okay. In the city manager budget, there are salaries and benefits and expenditures related to the city manager and assistant city manager and executive aide. The reason why there's such a large increase from the amended FY-2009 budget is because the budget for the assistant city manager and the executive aide's salary and benefits are now being funded for an entire year. They were cut in fiscal year 2009 to basically account for the hiring, when they were hired. There are no new initiatives or capital requests for this particular department. Do you have any questions before I move on? Okay. In the city clerk's department, the budget reflects salary and benefits expenses related to one half of the city clerk. She is one that wears a couple of different hats. She's the city clerk and the court clerk. You'll see the remainder of her time appropriated in the municipal court budget. The CH-2 Hill contract is actually booked under the professional fees contracted line item. It includes the cost of a deputy city clerk and a records clerk as well as supplies and travels and all of that related to them. There is an overall increase in department of a level of $85,000 and this is due to the cost of the election and the annual maintenance of MuniCode and Granicus. There are no new initiatives or capital requests for this department. Did y'all have any questions about the city clerk's department?
I have a quick question. Just knowing that we're in the process of transitioning from the CH-2 Hill model and we don't know exactly what that full transition period will be, does this budget contemplate the full six months before resources are transitioned internally or is that the shortened timeframe that we talked about the other evening?
This actually contemplates an entire year of funding because we didn't quite know how to budget. We didn't know what the transition was going to look like. We didn't know at the time if we were going to actually transition. We do know now we are going to. Just because we don't have any cost figures to put toward that, you're going to see in every department, it basically includes an annual contract.
I'll clarify that too, and we may have to do a budget amendment middle of the year, but keep in mind that yearly amount is a less amount than what our current contract was.
Right.
So, basically what should happen, hopefully, it's a lower amount, as we transition, we're going to have some costs that we may have to pay a little more for something to transition it.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll save a little more over here, so it should balance out. But we will have to probably adjust it, but the thinking was that it should be fairly accurate through the whole year.
Right, thank you, Mayor. And I guess my question will be, rather than to ask it every time, but assuming I can recall that, but before we formally approve a budget, once we get to that stage, one of the things that would be helpful would be to look at some various scenarios that would say, okay, right now, we know that this contemplates a full year of those CH-2 Hill costs. But if we could then say, gee, under scenarios A and B, we think that that could be scaled back by X amount. The reason being is when we start looking at taking away dollars from land acquisition for parks and rec, it would just be helpful to have some sense of what some of those savings could be if we're successful transitioning within a six-month period, where weighted average of some in three months, some in six. So, just food for thought as we get between tonight and when we need to finally adopt a budget, having a better sense of what those could be and what that range might be would be helpful.
Okay, we'll try.
Yeah, the only reason I keep saying this, I'm not diminishing it, but the cost that's in the budget is much lower and our costs probably won't be a whole lot less than what's in the budget. So, maybe a few dollars, but it's probably not going to be a very big swing.
And I guess to your point, it could be, it might vary in different departments.
It's going to average over the year like this and we're kind of in the middle, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. In the finance department, as you recall, in fiscal year 2009, the finance department, it was lumped in with HR, Public Information and Marketing, Legal and Risk Management under General Administration. We're currently in the process of splitting that out in the budget amendment that was, that's being presented to you last week and next week. The budget, the amended budget FY-2009 column does not represent all of the amendments that are being brought forth to you because they haven't been approved yet. I tried at the time when I was putting together this document to estimate, you know, what the budget amendment was going to be, so it's a, it's close. So, if you take into account the proposed amendment, there is a decrease of almost $100,000 between FY-2009 and FY-2010. This is due mainly to a reduction in the CH-2 Hill contract allocation for this department. There are no new initiatives or capital requests. Do you have any questions for this department?
So, that's the shift from that employee, from an external employee to a direct employee, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we appreciate that, Kasey.
I'm glad to provide it to you.
Sorry, just a little levity is always helpful at this time.
Under legal, the projected cost for 2010 is $200,000 and this is a slight increase over 2009 due to current trending. Is there any questions?
I have a question. Is Mr. Gerard still over there? One of the things I think in the past that I'm not sure we've done as thoroughly as maybe we could, and that would be to look at specific items and perhaps that's what's behind this. But I think that there are some things that are already on our plate that we understand will continue to require legal input. And I know we've done some of that because we start to now track it on a project basis. Some of those projects obviously have resulted in higher costs, some in lower costs. But have you been able, Mr. Gerard, to go through and if not, if we could, just to go through and really look at those specific projects? Which of those do we feel will continue? Which of them will not? Just so that we can better understand it. Is that 11% increase? Is it really realistic or... I think you know where I'm headed because we've gone through this, I think, now that we've got a couple of years under our belt. And I think sometimes we do underestimate some of the things that are going to require legal expenses. And I'm for keeping our legal expenses extremely effective and as low as possible, but I don't want us to not include items that we already know are going to utilize legal fees.
Yeah, council members on our behalf, the key, the key is looking at those items, there are two various camps. There's the day-to-day administrative things that I could ask to do by Chris and the staff. That's fairly inexpensive, quite frankly. And then there's the bigger long-term things and of course, one of the big cash cows is litigation. And if there's a lot of litigation, you're going to, you're going to get a little more sunk costs. I will tell you right now, between the mayor and the city manager, I am doing my best to keep them updated on really a month-to-month basis of where our fees are. And Chris will call me with status updates and say, here's where you're trending, we need to watch this. And we try to, and we try to watch it. And it's, it's challenging because obviously, when we get a phone call from staff, we try to be responsive to it. But all I can tell you is, is that it is being monitored very closely within appreciation of the fact that the city council has made it clear they want to keep the fees as efficient as possible. I'm mindful of that.
And I appreciate that. I just was hoping that, that I'd hear that, yes, we have indeed taken the top 10 items and said, yep, we know that these are going to take another six months for the top three because there's some in that top three that I think a year ago, we contemplated wouldn't cost us as a city and indeed have. So, again, we're not going to resolve that tonight. I just wonder if we could maybe take that, either way, either to affirm that 11% is enough or maybe it's too high. I doubt it's too high.
And if I could say one more thing too, and one of the vagaries is the fact that we can't predict our legal future.
Right.
For instance, we open up the mail one day and there's a piece litigation.
Absolutely.
And if our insurance carrier denies it, guess what Milton's now stuck with.
Correct. And so, I get that. I just want to make sure that we've really thought through those contingencies and I know that we do our best to do that. But I think we've got some legal history that would give us some prediction, at least for the first five to six months.
Can you just go ahead and confirm that you won't charge us anything over the budget?
Remember a lawyer saying this, Mr. Mayor, and you know what happens when their mouth is made.
I did toss that up for you, Jeff.
And also, everyone, remember, any calls, any work after 5:00 PM is off the clock.
Construction, they called, led a...
I do, I do, I do want to say, and give Ken and his firm credit for, you know, we had some much higher legal fees early on. And sat down with Ken and we lowered our budget and whatnot, and they have been very good about staying within budget and we've really trimmed a lot of costs off there. I think you are being aware of keeping things efficient, but...
I do have just one question. I know that there was one particular legal expense that we were trying to recoup some of the, potentially we pooped some of the cost on, on a... Is it 10?
Oh, yes, well, yeah, there is. And of course, if there's opportunities for fee recovery in litigation, we're going to pursue them as aggressively so long as we feel like there's ultimately a payoff at the end of it. I'm not going to waste your money going after, but that's still a work in progress.
So, but if we're successful in recouping those, those fees, I assume we just have another revenue account that they will go in and offset it?
Yes, ma'am. They go to Stacy and whatever she does with them, I'm sure is...
Costs is a check immediately.
Exactly.
Words about where to post it.
That's right. And we also took into account the transition of the contract and we know there's going to be a lot of RFPs and different contracts that are going to be coming through and that we would have to be sending to the attorney for review. So, we definitely looked at that as well whenever we were contemplating how much to put in the budget.
Right, and again, it's not to beat up our legal staff. I think instead it's to say, let's make sure that we're utilizing those resources and that we're not precluding a legal review when indeed we really need it.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Moving on to IT. In the IT budget, it includes the salary cost for, benefits cost for an IT director and the cost for an IT manager, a GIS technician and an IT technician are included in the CH-2 line item. There was one initiative for IT. It is the network bandwidth optimization that will increase the speed of the mobile units for police and fire and the network connection, internet connection for police and fire. This initiative was mistakenly entered as $17,000 when it was initially presented to you last week. That figure did not include the monthly metro ethernet cost, bringing the true cost for this initiative to $32,120. So, that was increased in the budget. There's also a capital request of $35,000 for the purchase of color ortho photography and LiDAR.
Could you explain that, please?
I want to get Kelly to come up here and explain that.
I can't even pronounce it, so...
I know that was going to come up. I'll do the best I can. I don't claim to be a GIS expert, but basically, the ortho photography will be the, sort of the aerial. I think right now, we're up to a meter and they're from 2006, I believe is the current, I think is what we have current as I talk to them today. What LiDAR gives us is, it's kind of neat if you Google it, which is what I did today. They take a plane and they fly over and they basically shoot a laser down and it kind of spans the ground. And what it's going to give us is topography. So, it'll tell us the elevations and stuff like that, which we can then lay on, the GIS analysts can lay on top of that map, that aerial map and give them the ideas of, oh, there's a hill, there's a mountain, there's a, you know, deep gully or something like that. So, it's going to help us a lot, especially in the public works and especially in public safety as well. So, that's kind of, in a nutshell, that's what it is. So, it's basically updating our aerial photography maps and giving us some topography as well to go with it.
And we're doing this in conjunction with other cities?
Sandy Springs, Johns Creek, Roswell. I have...
But that's why we're doing it now is because it is...
Because they basically, they do, the company does the flyover and I think it would be extremely more expensive if you called this company and said, oh, we want to do it now too. So, if you get a group of guys coming in to do it, it's, I guess, the Costco discount itself.
Isn't this information available through the federal government?
I, I am not sure. I can certainly get that information for you, but I think what they did was they were talking through, I took this up from Community Development Analysis was here. They were doing an original cooperative purchase agreement with these other cities. And then I think that kind of fell by the wayside or it didn't work out somehow. So, what we've gone back to is the $35,000 to run through. Originally, it was going to be 12, but they came back and I don't know if it, how it came to be that it fell through the cracks or whatever, but I do not think that this particular detail, I've got the photos here that they gave us, was available through the government. I just believe, what we have now is currently purchased from Fulton County, I think, back when, in '06, when we first kind of got through. Go ahead. You probably know more about this than I do.
Well, I think Kelly's right. I think the information that we've seen from the federal government that's allowed or available on the public record is not to the level of detail that we'll get here. This will probably be two-foot topo and a six-inch pixel resolution as opposed to one-meter pixel resolution, which really allows you to get in and see detail. But it's just not available right now.
Is there any other questions for Kelly?
I don't know if this is a Kelly question or not, but it has to do with the bandwidth. And I'm recalling that at one point we had some expenditures when we were connecting with the 911 center.
Same thing.
So this is that same bandwidth. So it's not a redundant cost. It's because we have just growth within that bandwidth?
What we've done is we've added a firewall, which is a security measure to keep external attacks from the network. So hackers coming in and trying to get into our network. So basically, we've added a firewall to that connection. It's a managed firewall that the AT&amp;T will manage for us. It's cheaper, more effective to do it that way. So that's kinda what we added to it.
So it's not that we didn't have a firewall. I'm assuming that there was a firewall. This is just a more effective and efficient firewall?
Well, what we had was a client side, what they call a client-side firewall, which means it's on the computers themselves.
Right.
What this gives us is that, what they call a perimeter firewall, which will give us that initial, from the initial attack. So in case they bypass that perimeter firewall, we still have the desktops that will block any other malicious attacks that come through there.
And that's an increment, that's an annual fee that we're charging?
Correct. It's a monthly, we do, it's two separate line items technically. We just kinda jumped into one. One is the metro ethernet, which is the direct connection we have with the operator dispatch center. And the other one is the T1 internet connection, which is how I'm gonna get the police cars into our network so that they can talk to the operator.
And that's a dedicated line, correct?
Well, it's an internet, yeah, basically, yeah.
No other data is going through that, which is why you have that separate firewall?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think that's it. You can go home if you want to, Kelly. All right. In HR, included in the HR budget are the salary and benefits expenses for an HR director and HR generalist. These positions were both previously CH2M Hill positions, but they will transition over on October 1. We will also maintain a part-time position with CH side to manage their employees' benefits. There are no new initiatives or capital requests for this budget. Any questions? Moving on. Risk management. This is just property and liability insurance. There's really no changes from one year to the next. I think I did bump up the general liability, $20,000, just to anticipate new employees coming on, new contracts or something. And I decreased the unallocated. That was basically accounted for in claims and adjustments. That was just a contingency for claims against our insurance. But we haven't seen that even reach the $15,000 mark yet.
Is there a need for extended general liability? And how did, I know there's not much of an increase here, but how did we establish going from 2008 actual of $158,000 to amended 2009 and $190,000? Difference in premium cost?
Yeah, there, I believe, I'm just kinda looking through to see what was actually the difference. Well, in the amended 2009 budget, you'll see the unallocated amount. So if you take the $15,000 out of there, it gets you a little closer to the actual figure for 2008. And then there are-
Looks like there's some additional liability coverage for certain officials to cover, probably on lawsuits and things, I don't know. But that's an additional liability that wasn't there before. It makes up about the majority of that differential with some increase for the general liability premium. Additional question I have is knowing that we're obviously, again, moving away from CH2M Hill in this transition period. And in the past, a question that I know myself and another have had about how to look for more effective insurance premiums as it relates to our coverage. This is one of those areas that I, it may be important to have some additional discussion with CH because if right now this contemplates 100% of our coverage or theirs, can you speak to how we're doing that balance between the transition and what liability CH will maintain versus what liability? We need to have a separate and distinct liability. Are there periods of time whereby we're gonna have double coverage potentially? You know, how do we mitigate those costs? Because obviously, we don't need to be paid for more insurance, but nor do we wanna be underinsured as a city, looking at all that needs to be covered.
I think as we transition through the contract, we'll be talking with GMA to discuss when we suppose, we need to bring on the additional liability. We may not even have additional liability cost because I believe that the, what we have right now is covering, I think it would cover all the employees if we brought them all on. But we will definitely talk to them about it. This is just an estimate. The additional $20,000 that we have in general liability is just an estimate. When we were going through the renegotiations with CH, that was one of the things that we did discuss about. They were saying that it would be an additional cost to the city. And so I honestly just estimated $20,000 to put in there. It may not even be that much.
So if we just take a look at that, obviously, it's, you know, this is a living document, as you said. But it just seems to me with that transition, we've got CH who's charging us currently for some of that liability, whether that be flow-through or not. And then what our premiums would be if we have to acquire that separate and distinct, obviously levering that relationship with GMA. The other thing that I know we've talked about in the past is some of our parklands, et cetera, which currently may not have as much active recreation, but still candidly are quite available, obviously, to citizens. And I believe that our general liability covers for that. But if we can, through this process, just verify that we wouldn't need to increase that, that we're in good shape based on the fact that that now has been publicly opened, if you will.
I spoke with them the other day, actually, about that. And we are covered.
Good. Thank you. That's good news.
If I can add one comment to that, council member, and I agree with Stacy on this. I can envision there being no discernible increase in premiums, particularly to the extent that your public safety is already under the municipal umbrella. That's where a lot of your liability risk is, is in public safety. And if we're already covering that, administrative staff just can't get into that much trouble from a liability perspective.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Back to my original question. Extended general liability or umbrella liability. That's a premium that CH had been charging us since day one. Where is that, where is that premium cost?
It's included in the monthly contract amount that we pay them.
Okay.
It was an additional invoice that was sent to us.
Going forward then, how are we gonna compensate for that premium?
Like we were just discussing, bringing on new employees should not be an additional cost in liability insurance.
You're talking about factoring it out? Yeah, fact that what we're paying now, we're not continuing to pay as we transition that act.
Right. And that's gonna be discussed whenever we go through and figure out what the transition is gonna be for each department. I'm sure that that's gonna be in those discussions. We'll keep that in mind.
Well, the extended general liability are limits over and above the basic underlying liability limits.
Is it some sort of a catastrophic, is that what that is, catastrophic policy?
No, no.
It's not that.
Your basic policy limits probably go up to $3 million per occurrence or aggregate. And your extended general liability will extend your limits to whatever you want. And I think in the original contract, CH stated that the extended general liability limits were $50 million. And when they first charged us for it, they were looking for $250,000 a year for premium on a $50 million policy. I don't think we need $50 million, but somewhere, somewhere that premium is buried here. And I think we need to investigate what umbrella limits we need to carry as a city.
Well, I concur that $50 million's a bit rich. I'm not used to seeing that in the other jurisdictions I work in.
And the other thing, going back to that original negotiation, I mean, there was cost savings that CH was incurring, but they weren't initially passing them on to us, which is why we went through that contractual negotiation. Although there was some resistance initially, they did ultimately agree that indeed we were being charged more than what we needed to be. So they reduced those fees. And we just need to make sure through this transition that, one, we're not either paying twice or that we've got adequate transition for that liability, whether it be general or extended or whatever that additional liability would be. I'm assuming we're getting competitive bids on all of that and-
With, for insurance?
Just for the insurance coverage. And I know that there's limited folks that provide that. Make sure that we've asked all the questions that would allow that liability insurance to be as small as possible.
Well, I mean, are we kind of going outside of GERMAs?
Right. At this moment, we actually have an RFQ out there that is being contemplated. And it kinda got pushed to the wayside when we were going through the budget process and all the renegotiations with CH2M Hill and now nearing property tax billing. And we did have several responses that we're gonna go back to and discuss that.
It's just, it's a large line item, obviously. And there's, it's a competitive market for that.
And that's for both general liability, property liability insurance, as well as workers' comp.
Terrific. Thank you.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but I'd like to see some investigation as to whose coverage is primary throughout this whole transition. I'd hate to get into a claim situation and battle it out between our insurance carrier and CH's insurance carrier. Probably something needs to be addressed.
Well, I can't believe that that analysis, at least back from GERMAs' perspective, hasn't already been done a time or two. So, I mean, they're always looking to see who's primary versus secondary in every claim.
Absolutely.
And so they may have already done some of that.
General government buildings is simply taking into account the city hall lease and any additional operating expenses that fall under that. It was initially broken out into the different departments. We decided that it would just be better just to lump it all into one department, basically. It's easier to look at. You can see it clearly. Rather than adding up all these little numbers, you can now see one lump sum number to how much it's cost to operate the city hall or to lease the city hall building. Public information and marketing. This is a department that was formerly known as communications. And it was changed to represent the responsibilities of the department. It's just a little more indicative of what they do in the department. And this includes two employees, which is the communications manager and the special programs coordinator. Did I get it right, Linda?
That's put in now.
Okay. And there are no new initiatives, but we did, just going through, we did increase the postage for annual report. We're actually gonna make that a bi-annual report. It's not listed in the detail. But we wanna mail out two reports a year. It's a little difficult to get updated information in one report mailed out to the citizens. So we wanna see about mailing out two reports. And costs for this department are pretty much flat from the prior year. Are there any questions about that department before I move on?
I have one regarding the special events coordinator. I'm just gonna throw this out here as an idea. I mean, we have, so we have the roundup. We have the Christmas celebration in Crab Apple. We have Fourth of July Parade.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. In Crab Apple, the arts festival. Is there a need for a full-time position for that? Or can that be done through committees or something along that nature?
Well, we're, at the time, whenever we were making the budget, we basically said everything is as is, as it is now. We'll be looking at that whenever we go through the process of transitioning over.
Okay.
Any other?
I have a question. And I don't know where our cost for advertising with our legal organ, where is that embedded?
It is actually done through the CH contract.
Okay. So part of this $482,000 includes an amount for our legal organ. We've had this discussion in the past, and I don't know that we've ever resolved it. If you go back to before we became a city, there were some questions about legal organ and how we were gonna do that. There were some issues with performance measures, making sure that we were auditing in terms of distribution. There was also some input that was provided by Gerarda Davis that said how we could actually proceeded with our legal organ may or may not be the standard. Without knowing how much of that $482,000 is being expended for required advertising, I'd like to see what that number would be, what that would be broken out as being. I think it would be important for us to understand that as we look to transition since right now, the timeline for transition in community development is not anticipated to be a full 12 months. And that would then, I mean, that's a legal requirement. We may or may not have to go with one legal organ. But can we break that out and get a better estimate as to what we spend monthly? And right now, because development, you know, patterns and applications are off, I just would like to have a better sense of what we're expending for the legal organ.
What you might be able to do is just call the legal lawyer and see what, you know, what the cost was for last year. And it's probably gonna be less for moving forward.
But we do have some other things, I think, in community development, because you have to advertise, well, other public care.
There's public care and community development. And there's public information and marketing. There's in finance. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in that.
But I think it's a large amount. And I think that we just need to be mindful, I say large, it's all relative. But I'd at least like to understand what that line item is. And then do we need to evaluate whether or not we're needing to get a competitive bid? I mean, again, I just think that we need, in this environment, in any environment, I think we need to be looking at those kinds of line items and determining, one, are we doing it the way we need to do it? Secondly, do we have to do it with that particular entity? Is that the best price? So, thank you.
Any other questions? In municipal court. This includes a salary and benefits cost for one half of our city clerk, who's also the court clerk, Janette back there. Municipal judge, the associate judge, solicitor, deputy court clerk, and the admin assistant. The deputy court clerk and the admin assistant were previously CH2M Hill employees. On October 1st, they'll be transitioned to a city employee. We're actually gonna be doing that here soon, in the next few weeks. Costs have gone way down because we have transitioned that department over. So you do not have a CH2M Hill line item in this budget. Is there any questions before I move on with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Professional fees, is that $16,250? So that's a professional fee that's, that we're paying CH currently?
No, that is, if you look on the detailed spreadsheet. There you go. It's the breakdown.
I guess I need my glasses on, don't I?
It is for quarter point attorney, attorney and sub-judge.
I see it now. Thank you. I needed to put my glasses on earlier. Can you also help me understand, what's the stipend of $4,800?
That is for the solicitor.
Okay.
It's in her contract. Is there any other questions? Moving on. To police. In the police budget, there are 30 and a half people. The half person is our crossing guard. And that's including the salary and benefits cost. It also includes the new initiatives of two police officers, crime prevention officer and narcotics detective. There's also a purchase of a warranty extension on the laptops in the police department, the mobile unit laptops. If there are any detailed questions about this budget, we can ask Deb, the chief, to come up. Do you have any questions?
Do you have the entire police budget?
Yes.
I have a question about the, just the, a new opportunity with the community services officer. We had originally had a plan or a goal of rolling out some of that this month. Do you have an update on that? I guess that's not really budget related.
The update is Sergeant Simonowski went back to patrol. And we have nobody. So, I mean, at this point, it would be giving that extra duty to someone who already has a full-time job, plus getting called to court, plus being out sick, plus everything else. So that just kinda got, when, the reason that we got to the point we did on that was because we had, we had her because she was on light duty. We're back to not having anybody now. And we want to get those things going. And there are so many great things that we could be doing. And I feel like all the citizens see right now are the bad things that they interpret that we're doing. And we're getting beat to death over it. But this, I mean, this person, they attend HOA meetings, any Cub Scout event, any Girl Scout event. I mean, they are just the person that can go out there and be a good face. And people can interact and people can meet a police officer and say, oh, that's just a person.
But it's really an even greater service than that from a services officer perspective, more than just being a positive face in the environment, in the community, which is great. But really, the few meetings that we did have with a couple of guinea pig HOAs a few months ago, you know, it was tremendous. It gave them really hope in some of the areas that we're representing off Highway 9 especially. So the budget, once approved, will be able to deploy that or?
Absolutely.
And then the timeframe would be immediate?
Immediate.
Thank you.
I have one question. At one time, we were talking about the narcotics, this was, I guess, the narcotics detective was gonna be in the bucket, as we called it, last year.
And it was said that that person would pay for him or herself. Is that still the case?
That is still the case. I believe it got out of the bucket, and it actually made it, and then it got frozen again.
Okay.
So, this is the same position again we're asking for. There's a certain percentage of money seized that goes to each agency, it's a very small percent, it's two or three point. Yeah, but they seize such large amounts of money. Chris and I looked at the numbers that they've seized over the last few years, and estimating really, really low, it would pay for itself.
Yeah, it looked like it paid, you know, considerably more, 50% more of what the cost was for that officer.
And the confiscated assets can't actually pay for the salary and the benefits for the officer itself, but it will help pay for some new equipment or things like that that we would actually have had to have spent in the general fund. So it does take some of the burden off whenever, whenever we're looking at budget requests for the next year.
Is that something that we would fix on the sixth month? Or next year?
If we receive the money, yes, it could fix it. We actually do have about 43. Well, whenever we get drug seizures, and.
I don't know what the schedule is for how quick it comes in. There may actually be some delay with the court process.
Right.
And then, of course, getting the money, once the court says that the money belongs to the seizing entity as the task force, then I'm sure the task force has its own procedures to go through to actually get the City of Milton its share of that. So there may be some delay. But something else I want you to think about in this position is that currently, our patrol officers and our detectives are doing what they, they're, they're being completely reactive at this point. Burglaries, entering autos, all those things, nobody is working narcotics investigations in the city. Occasionally, we'll hear that the DEA's got something going on, but that's only if they stumble across it and it brings, brings them up here. This would give us access to an entire unit, an entire task force with a whole team of people that can do surveillance, they can do undercover buys, they can do search warrants. With us only contributing to one officer, it gives us that whole resource, and that's something we need up here.
Yeah, I wish we didn't need it, but I suppose.
We do, we really do. And I think y'all will be surprised how much, if we can do this, how much they'll be able to dig up up here.
Oh, I won't be surprised.
It looks like maybe salaries and wages is going up.
And that is because in the fiscal year 2009, we had a Public Safety Administration budget, and that included the police chief, and fire chief, and the admin assistant, and then the records clerk. And so in fiscal year 2010, those are getting split out and going to the proper departments. In the Police Department, you have the police chief salary, that's also included. The records clerk and the admin clerk, or admin assistant, are also included in there. And it includes the initiative requests, all of those are included in the salary and benefits cost.
My question, though, is that it looks like that's going up maybe 25% or so. Pension's going up almost 50%. And you know pension is a hot point with me, because I've seen what it has done to many, many other municipalities where it has, and a lot of private corporations where it has caused them long-term a lot of problems. Why is the pension going up at a much higher percentage than the salaries and wages is going up in this situation?
Pension costs have gone up. They were, they went up, they were at 3.27% for the city contribution, and I think it went up to 3.54% this year. That started in May, and so we have to account for any additional cost. That is the, the full cost that is projected for every employee if we maintain full staff all year long. The, the cost that you see for fiscal year 2009 is likely amended, I don't have the figure in front of me, but it's likely amended from what was initially projected, based on actual costs.
But I know we've discussed possibly freezing pension planning, putting in a profit sharing plan instead.
It's a possibility, we're still contemplating that right now.
Okay, we are still contemplating that.
When we get a new HR director in here, that's going to be one of the top things that they do. Do you have any other questions for Chief?
One quick question on education and training. Is that education for our officers, or does that include some of the education in terms of outward education with the citizenry?
That's for the officers.
There's all officers, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Moving on to fire, in the Fire Department, almost the notes. Bear with me just a moment, I'll come up with my notes over here.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
While you're looking to get the citizens to comment about there not being a police, a fire department over here on Highway 9, yet in fact, we have our relationship with the City of Alpharetta. Would it be fair to say, Chief, that we do have coverage here on Highway 9 that's closer than Thompson Road because of the facility at Windward?
That's correct. With the automatic aid agreement with Alpharetta, that kind of brought that unit into this area. And if our, our unit's not available, we have an Alpharetta unit that's available.
I think we ought to do something about communicating that, because that's very serious, what's the statement that she made, which I'm sure she just didn't realize and had not seen something. But maybe there'd be a communication that we could do through the website to, you know, reiterate that to folks because of her comments, that'd be good.
Yeah, I agree. I think there is just a misconception there on what the, what the actual service is available here, so.
They just realize that real fire trucks are red, right? It's such, some of you guys, firemen get it, Alpharetta has white trucks, huh?
That's how I differentiate.
All right, in the Fire Department, there are 54 full-time employees. There are three stations located inside the city limits, one outside the city limits in Alpharetta, like you just mentioned, in mutual aid agreement with Alpharetta. The new initiatives that we have, I can have Chief explain all of those initiatives to you. It's the heart-ready city, the rescue harnesses, and the exhaust extractors. I know Chris went into some detail about those in the meeting last time. Would you still like some further explanation of what those are? No, we're good? Okay. There's also, is there any other questions about the actual MNO requests before we move on to the capital projects for this department? Okay. In the Capital Fund, Capital Projects Fund, there's a first-year funding for a pump or tanker truck. This is a reserve apparatus. The first-year funding is $100,800. This is a six, six or seven-year funding. I think the label, it was a seven-year funding for a, a new fire truck. This is, I think Chief can definitely tell you why this is needed, if you need to hear that explanation. You may need to hear it.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to. One of the issues, and I believe City Manager Augurin brought it up at the last meeting, is that our units are now out of warranty. We did put an initiative into the budget to maintain those units, but the problem is anytime that unit goes out of service for maintenance, or if we end up in an accident, and it was taken out of service, or any type of extended type of damage that's done, such as to the pump, the transmission, that unit would be out of service. So we have nothing other than the resources that Alpharetta has available. When they're available, they have issues as well. When their units go down, they have to use their reserve apparatus. So it's kind of a hit and miss if we have a unit available to us. So with this initiative, what we, what we've done is we've budgeted for a new piece of apparatus that would serve as a frontline unit, and then take one of our existing units and put that into a reserve status. And then we would continuously rotate those units throughout the system, based on mileage and, you know, repairs that are required. We'll keep those out, and then put the newer unit that has less mileage in service.
Just be a similar unit?
Yes, they do not make the enforcer, the Pierce enforcer, which is what we currently have today. They no longer produce that unit, but they have a comparable unit, so. And one of the goals here is that with the ISO coming in next spring or early summer, we want to have some type of initiative to show that we are making efforts to increase our water supply. So that's why we're looking at a cross between a tanker and a pumper. Anything over 1,000 gallons that that unit would carry, 1,000 gallons of water, would then classify as a tanker, which then may assist us in our ISO rating and bringing that rating down from what we currently are holding with the four with North Fulton County that was once there.
What is our ISO rating?
Right now, we are just carrying what Fulton County had at the time. Technically, the City of Milton does not have an ISO rating. We were on their radar when I made contact with them. They were happy to hear from us, because I think we were going to pop up on their calendar anyway. So this way, we're working with them to gather all the information for that review. So once they come out, then they will give us our own rating. And hopefully, we improve, my goal here is to two, to get us into a three, a rating of a three, so. Yes, sir.
In terms of equipment, I know that, obviously, when we became a city, we didn't want to look at used equipment. Have you evaluated, and I know that lots of arguments about new versus used because of maintenance, et cetera, but just because the purchase of such a piece of equipment's expensive, have we contemplated, especially in this environment, if there's other cities that maybe purchased equipment, and they found out that maybe they were expending too much? Are there some options where we could look at some used, but gently-used sorts of equipment as an option?
That's something we're going to consider, but you have to remember as well, it's like buying a used car.
I know.
You're gathering, you're going to get somebody else's problems.
I've always bought used cars, so therefore, you know, I don't buy more than what I can afford. So, I just wondered if we're going to do that as a city as well, especially since this would be a piece of equipment that we would be looking to use in an off environment as opposed to necessarily buying a new piece of equipment.
Yeah, and that's an option. And one of the things that I've been speaking with, with the Pierce vendor who currently manufactured our vehicles, is what units did they have that was a spec vehicle that somebody turned down and couldn't afford no longer? So we are looking at other options besides saying, hey, I want the brand-new fire, shiny red truck.
Shiny and red is nice, but especially because it wouldn't be our primary unit, and it would be just a plant, those other things. I just, it would be a significant savings if those options were out there.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Chief? Thank you. Moving on to the EMS Operations Budget, this is simply the annual contract for Rural Metro. It's the same as this fiscal year, there's no changes.
What's the duration of that? Is that renewable on an annual basis?
Yes, all contracts with the city are renewable on an annual basis, by law. Is there any other questions? Okay. Moving on to Public Works. In the Public Works Department, there are people. Sorry, notes got messed up. In the Public Works Department, there's a Director of Public Works, a Public Works Citizen Responder, a Transportation Engineer, Field Services Manager, and a Field Services Technician. There are some new initiatives in this department. All of those positions that I just listed are included in the line item for CH2M Hill. There are new initiatives in the Public Works Department, which include partnering with the City of Roswell by way of a use agreement that will allow the City of Milton to, residents to utilize their recycling facilities. That is for $50,000. There are funds to support volunteer efforts for cleanup programs, such as Adopt a Road, Stream Cleanups, and Volkey Trust Day, $5,000. And there's additional funding for overhead trimming of trees, bushes, and city rideaways of $18,000. In the Capital Projects Fund, there are several capital items that were funded based on critical needs of the city. $500,000 in pavement management, and $25,000 in restriping of existing roads, and $25,000 in traffic calming, $675,000 in the bridge replacement, I believe Chris has already gone through all of this, and $425,000 in NPDES. That was actually decreased from what was initially projec, or what was presented to you last week. That is because we are talking to a consultant that would cost no more than $75,000. And the reason why we're talking to a consultant at this time is because Public Works, if we, if we decide to transition over Public Works, it is a very intensive process, and we would need to consult with an outside firm on bringing over those services, because Chris and I don't know about Public Works, and we would need, and we don't want to pay double salaries at this time, because we don't really know what exactly we would need. And so using a consultant would help us transition that huge department over with all the details and everything. So we are, we are discussing that right now. And that is included in the MNO budget that is presented to you tonight.
I've got one question. I thought we could use Roswell Recycling, I've always taken much of Roswell Recycling. Were you not allowed to use it?
Carter's going to attack that question.
One of the things that.
They never turned me away.
That's right. One of the things that the City of Roswell is looking at right now is a membership fee. And so for those people who are not residents of Roswell, there would be an option for them to become a member of the recycling facility at some established rate. And they have not established that yet. What they did was approach us to see if we would want to become essentially a member as a city with, with them. And we have proposed back to them that that may be a possibility, but we would want to base that on the number of users that are actually from the City of Milton. So for the past five or six weeks, they've been doing some surveys at the facility to try and determine how many City of Milton residents actually use the facility, so that we can talk about what types of rates they would charge us as, as a city versus providing individual memberships for people outside of Roswell.
My understanding, they got some fees back from the materials that were being recycled, kind of paid for the upkeep of the recycling center, and there may be some additional cost to it, but. So I guess $50,000 is kind of the worst-case scenario.
Well, it was really just a placeholder. The discussions were in the initial phase right now, not knowing how many residents use the facility. We, we didn't know what, how those discussions would go, so. They have roughly a $400,000 operating budget for the entire recycling facility. And initially, there was some discussion about whether or not we would pay half or a third of that, and we certainly didn't want to do that if we didn't have many residents that went down and used the facility. So we're really waiting on the results of that survey before we begin discussions with them about any, any costs that would be related to that.
You know, when they finish the survey, so wait until after that to take the stuff.
No, you need to go down there, so it looks like we have some users.
Anyway, then they charge us, and we think that they charge us based on number of users.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question, and Carter, I think that this, it ties into the analysis that's still underway with regards to our current waste haulers, and the fact that we have an ordinance on the book today that requires that those haulers also provide recycling. And it would seem to me that as we evaluate whether or not we want to partner with the City of Roswell, that we would also evaluate what do we need to be doing as a city to ensure that our current waste haulers are meeting the ordinance requirements? Because obviously, if we have waste haulers that by law are supposed to be recycling for our citizens, and yet they're not doing that, you may have a higher percentage of citizens that feel the need to go out of city. So I think that in order for us to evaluate this, one, we'd note the statistics from City of Roswell and Recycling Center, but also, I think we really need to ensure that our waste haulers are meeting the ordinance that we already have in place.
Absolutely.
And again, it's a question I've asked a couple of times, and I know we're all busy. I'm just not sure at what point are we going to ensure that the ordinance we have on the books is one that we actually enforce, if I know in a better term.
Certainly, and there may be other programs that we could look at to drop off facilities here within the city limits. The one good thing about the Roswell recycling facility is they do accept a lot of things that aren't normally picked up in a normal trash hauler type.
And I guess it's twofold, is that, one, I mean, I firmly believe in recycling. I think that looking at partnering, as we're doing with Alpharetta for police and service, can make a lot of sense. It's just that I don't think we want to overpay. And even if we found that that survey indicated that some people are recycling there, some of those numbers might fall off if we indeed ensure that our current waste haulers are doing the job that by law they're supposed to be doing.
Absolutely, and we may find that the fee structure that they put together for a membership makes more sense than paying for it as a city as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Can we quit talking trash here for a minute? Speed trailer, did you not purchase that this past year?
We didn't have a speed trailer, we picked, we did purchase some radar signs, but not the trailer. So the signs we purchased are up at Summit Hill Elementary right now, you may have seen those. This would be a more mobile, mobile-type unit trailer that we could take around to various locations.
I have a question about Parks and Rec. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board was asked to put together.
The Parks and Rec Advisory Board was asked to put together kind of what they felt the needs were going to be with regard to things that they were contemplating or advocating. How much of what they put together, I saw their preliminary spreadsheets, how much of what they put together did you actually incorporate? Or, you know, how closely did you guys work together and kind of make sure that what they felt the needs were kind of got incorporated here?
Do you know that?
That's a question for the next department head.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I said public works, and then I'm looking at Parks and Recreation under public works, so...
Well-
Well, actually, I can answer that. I mean, we, we have a lot of money in the capital projects fund for parks, even though I know that we're taking $500,000 out of the land acquisition account to fund other higher priority projects at this time. We did look at a lot of the requests that they had and know that we have the funding right now to fund a lot of the requests they have. And so, as we're going through, and we actually have a Parks and Rec manager position out there, well, actually, it was advertised, I believe it's closed since then, that will help walk us through, or help take us through the process of using, utilizing some of this money and covering some of the requests from the park advisory board. Okay? Any other questions?
Tina, I can give you a real quick answer if it will help at all. I took all of the recommendations that they gave, prioritized them, and in the process of what they were recommending, I'll give you an example. One of the things that they suggested was to not do anything with Beth Wall, but we're going to go ahead and put the roof on Beth Wall. So, some of the things that they recommended were not necessarily in line with what the city was planning on doing anyway. But where it made sense and the money was there, then I just went ahead and took everything that they had given to me, prioritized that, and then submitted it on through the process to Stacy and Chris.
Okay. Would the capital projects or expansion projects and things be in this budget, or would it be in capital?
It would be in capital projects.
Okay, so, anything that would be, so that land acquisition and improvements to our current parks would be in capital projects?
Mm-hmm.
Stacy, a quick question, just before we close out on discussion of public works. When you talked about the consultant, do we know what that line item is at this point? Or is that-
It's in professional fees. It's under contract consultant. And just to explain it a little bit further, Chris gave me some talking points. He said that public works is the most complicated in time and sense of parts of the transition, other than IT, both of them are pretty complicated. And we also, we selected a sole-source vendor. We've already talked to this vendor and haven't signed the contract yet, I don't believe. I think that has to be brought forth to the council. The person that we've been speaking with was actually, he's a subject matter expert, and he has institutional knowledge of both Milton and CH2M Hill. And he was actually the former Milton interim public works director whenever Milton came on board and was incorporated, is Vic Jones. CH2M Hill has also specifically instructed their employees to, that they cannot participate or have anything to do with any RFPs or anything like that of transitioning over the contract. And so, we, the city employees itself would have to do this, and since we were already overextended at this point, we decided it would be better to talk to a consultant about it as well. And it's a time and material contract that's paid hourly. We are mindful, very mindful, not to spend more than what is needed to be successful. We can terminate it at any time, and so, if it is decided that we will continue on with CH2M Hill to provide the public works piece of the contract, then we can terminate this contract with the consultant. We would at least, at the point that we would get some cost information from CH2M Hill, we would have some idea about where we would be as a city if we provided that service in-house at that time. So, it wouldn't be money wasted.
And just maybe separate from the statement, if we could get the backup behind that information, does that contemplate 12 months? And if so, or is it less than? What are the hours and rates associated with that fee?
There are, I don't know exactly the hours and rate. I mean, I know that the contract is an actual cost not to exceed $50,000, but with, it can be modified up to $75,000, so we went ahead and put $75,000 in the budget. And, I mean, I know that there's a transition timeframe. I believe that public works is probably one of, if it's transitioned over to the city department, it would be one of the last departments to come over. So, it would be an April project that would be coming over. So, I would expect that this would be a six-month contract, or seven-month contract, I guess.
So, maybe just separate from tonight, if we could get a little bit more detail in terms of what all that contemplates, that would be helpful.
I believe that would be coming forward to you in a council meeting as well, but we can certainly provide that to you.
I'm going to have to break in for a second. I'm going to have to leave. I'm going to ask Tina to take over. I'm also wondering on the time if there would be a consensus to do the variance training at another, earlier before next meeting or something like that. So, I'll just kind of look around here and see if that's, is that agreeable by the council?
I guess my question, just can we talk about what it was going to contemplate? I don't mean that we need to-
Yeah, I would support the bring, because I think we've got a while left here-
On the budget.
-in order to give that its due. I think it needs, you know, more of our attention than-
I sent a note to Ken, and he said that he would be available at 5:00 before our meeting started next Monday.
Is that AM or PM?
Yeah.
Also, in the public works department, in the capital grant fund, there are two projects in there that require funding in this year. The first project is the Birmingham and Providence Road Design, and the second project is Arnold Mill at New Providence Road Design. Both of these are intersection improvements that have had funding from fiscal year 2008, 2009, 2010. This is just a, it's a match, we're building up the match for funding through GDOT, I believe.
That's right, federal funding through GDOT.
I believe we covered everything on public works. Do we have any other questions for Carter? Nope. Thanks, Carter.
Thank you.
In the Parks and Rec Department, again, like I mentioned earlier, we have the salary and wages for a Parks and Recreation Manager. There's really no new initiatives in this department. No, there's no new initiatives in this department. There are projects in the capital projects fund, or funding in the capital projects fund for any capital requests that are presented by Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I think we covered pretty much everything at this point. Do we have any other questions for Brad?
What are the professional fees outside of that salary, the contracted professional fees?
The contracted professional fees is, the $15,000 is for Birmingham Park mowing and litter pickup. Is that all? Okay. Thanks, Brad. In community development, this department has, it includes in the contract, contract costs for CH2M Hill, a director of community development, two planners, environmental engineer/arborist, two construction/plans review inspectors, and a code enforcement officer, a building official, building plans reviewer, two building inspectors, and a permit technician. In that lineup, some of these, some of these positions are provided by subcontractors, safe-built, low-engineering. So, the actual cost for building official and the plans reviewer and the building inspectors are actually paid for by the revenues that they, that department generates. So, it's actually not totally included in the CH2M Hill line item. I just listed the positions. And there are no new initiatives and no capital requests for that line, for that department.
The Highway 9 design guidelines in the Crab Apple Master Plan update are still in the requested budget for fiscal year 2010?
Correct. We did put $15,000 back in the budget from what was presented last week for the Highway 9 design guidelines, based on discussions that we've had since then. And the Crab Apple Master Plan update was included in there whenever we, in Alice's requested budget.
We're both still with that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that the chairman and co-chairman consulted with Chris and made the decision that $15,000 would be appropriate based on what their needs were for some of the architectural design. You know, even though we had started with $50,000, gone to $30,000, they felt like that was what they needed. They didn't want to overspend either, from what I understand.
You're not going to explain that progression to, when the specific project was brought forth in fiscal year 2008, it was initially requested at $50,000. And at that time, the budget process was that there was a bucket of money that the city council could divvy up, and there was discussions with Tom Wilson on how much he really thought it could cost to provide the Highway 9 design guidelines. We were going to outsource it, and so, he thought that $30,000 would be enough to cover that. And then, it came to be that we were actually going to be doing that service in-house by, with a committee. And so, that's why it was actually not included in the budget for fiscal year 2010 initially, because Alice said, well, it's done by a committee, and we didn't spend any of the money in fiscal year 2009. So, that's the reason why it wasn't brought forth until just recently.
And so, Vic has gotten with Chris, and $15,000 is enough based on his needs? And I guess that's just my question as we proceed, is how do we validate that it's enough?
They've gone to that evaluation. I mean, I hate to speak on their behalf, but I met with Vic and his co-chair to specifically get rid of the master plan.
And I would just, I don't want to underestimate, especially given that that area obviously is a large area. I know that times are tough and people are usually willing to do a little bit more for a little bit less, but I just want to make sure that we don't underestimate what it would cost to do that. And I recognize that the committee evaluated that. I just would hope that we maybe got some back-of-the-envelope estimates, you know, from some folks that maybe are out there that understand this area.
They got a lot more than back-of-the-envelope, they got front of the report of evaluations.
So, as an example, did we get examples? I mean, we got some quotes from different folks. I just would like to know who we got quotes from.
The city itself actually didn't get quotes. I believe that the committee did that.
Okay, so that would be helpful information separate from the statement, if we can understand who the committee went to to get quotes and what all that actually entailed. I just want to make sure that we've got enough there and that we don't underestimate that.
Again, you know, these are not set in stone.
Sure. I mean, as an example, even if you just look at $15,000, their public master plan already has a master plan, and yet, out of the gate, we know that that, you know, is estimated at 25. And I would ask the same question with that one, is just, let's just make sure that we don't underestimate what's really necessary when we-
This is not a master plan, this is a Highway 9 design guideline.
Right.
So, it's much different than what you're talking about with regard to Crab Apple.
But it also, I was just going to say, the design guidelines, design guidelines to one person might mean something very different to somebody else.
Right.
And so, we could look at that separately. I just would like to better understand that.
Okay.
It does show LCI applications, $20,000 for the budget. I know we have in the past made two applications, unfortunately, we weren't successful, but we did them all internally. Are we looking at doing the LCI applications externally now, and that's why the cost is in it, or?
That is a good question, and I can't answer it because Tom isn't, Tom isn't here. I believe he left, so I have to get back with you on that.
Question out of sequence here. On your revenues and your fees, building permits, land disturbance permits, fire marshal fees. With CH, we're only getting 10% of the building permit fee. Was that 10% of the land disturbance fee also?
It's just building permits.
Okay. Have you accounted for the increase in revenue there based on your anticipated building permit costs or revenue?
I went to Alice and asked her professional opinion on what she thought that the building permit would bring in for fiscal year 2010, and she gave me that figure.
That's good enough for me.
Okay. All right. Debt service, it just includes the next-year funding for the lease purchase agreement that we had to start up the police and fire department.
I know we had some discussion of the fact that we may have to get another tan, depending on when we, Fulton County gets us a digest, and this would not show any interest at all in that.
No, I've done some additional cash flow analysis, and we should be fine provided that we get the digest, you know, in order, in time to be able to bill this year. If we can't get the digest, then we are stuck.
So, if we can't get the digest from Fulton County, we will have no choice?
We can't get a tan even then, because if we can't bill, I mean, it gets into a very serious issue, and I mean, I think Fulton County is also, and every other city is going through the same thing. So, I seriously doubt that Fulton County would wait to give us a digest. We have to have a digest by October 31st, or bill by October 31st in order to have property taxes billed this year, because they have to be due in the same year that they are assessed. That is the state law. And so, I know that Fulton County is working very, very hard on getting that information because if they don't get it, they can't bill either. So, we're all working on that. You have to have tax anticip, taxes to get a tan.
You have to know what your taxes anticipated are before you can get that anticipation.
Right.
And that's obvious.
So, that becomes a very serious issue if we do not get-
It's my understanding that the commissioners don't even have the information yet, so it's not just that they haven't provided it to us, but their own commissioners-
I think they receive several preliminary ones, and every time they receive a preliminary one, it differs.
There's something wrong.
And so, I mean, nothing is approved by the state, you have to approve by the state before it can be sent out, doesn't it?
Well, there's a temporary collection order that we have in place right now, and so, we'd have to work through the temporary collection order in order to get the appeals down in order for it to be approved by the state.
We're close to where they can be approved.
No, I think they're over the 5% threshold.
Did they ever get the 2008?
They have gotten it down, I think. I don't believe they've gotten it approved.
I don't think they've ever approved yet, have they? They hadn't gotten 2008 approved, but plus 2009.
Right, so they, we're still operating on the temporary collection order for 2008 as well. So, once the, once the digest is approved before 2008, the temporary collection order is lifted. Other financing uses, included in this is the 1% of contingency that we by our policies have to put out, that's $163,630, and then transfers out to the various other funds based on what the requests are for those funds. In the special events fund, this basically is just the cost for the events that the city sponsors or hosts. Those are the five events that Councilmember Tarrant mentioned earlier. It's funded entirely by donations and the hotel motel tax that we have from the one hotel that we have in the city limits of Milton, Spring Hill Suites. I don't have anything further to add. Is there any other questions that you would like to ask Linda about that? Yeah, well, she just left. Well, if there's any questions, I can probably try to answer. We're good? Okay. The operating grant fund is just the fund, the next-year funding for the Safer Grant. There are three firefighters that are funded by the Safer Grant. This is, I believe we are going into the 80%. Matt, can you help me out? I think it's, we're in the middle of the 80% year, where 80% match, the federal government matches 80% of the cost for the salary and benefits for the three firefighters. In June of next year, it goes to 50%. Right? Yeah. Actually, I think I have it right here. It's 50% in the third year. That starts June 21st of next year. So, are there any other questions about the operating grant fund?
The amount went down. You said the percentage of, we're going to receive is like-
The percentage that we're receiving went down. It went from 90-
Okay, so we're going to have to be paying a larger percentage of whatever it is.
Correct.
The overall amount went?
It went down based on actuals.
Okay. The cost is as much for those three as we had thought overall, as we had thought it was.
Right. I believe because we were, we were just doing estimates at the time and didn't know what all we could actually get refunded. what all we could actually get refunded for, and so now, we have a better idea, and so we have better estimates. And the Hotel Motel Tax Fund, we're projecting forty-seven thousand dollars in revenues. Forty thousand, that is going out to the Special Events Fund, and seven thousand dollars is going into the General Fund to fund website hosting and maintenance. Capital Projects Fund, I think we've covered all of that, as well as the Capital Grant Fund. That pretty much concludes my presentation.
In the Capital Projects Fund, under Parks and Recreation, do you have something allocated for the expansion, for not only land acquisition, but expansion and enhancement of Bell Memorial, our current park that...
In that line item, it's land acquisition and park enhancements, and so, there's no specific, specific project that it goes for. It is just kind of a, whatever the priorities are at the time.
All right.
Is that better answering your question?
I bet we got about seven or eight different priorities.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
If you have any other questions, please feel free to send them to me or Chris. We'll be happy to answer them, either during the week, or we can answer them at the next council meeting.
Just a quick question. The tree recompense, that number has been about the same for a long time, and it seems to me, I know that, you know, development has slowed, but I thought that that was one of those locations where if we didn't have a place for recompense, it would go. Have we just not had any funding for that? I know that, I know I've...
We haven't gotten any revenues for that, and I believe that we are, without Community Development here, I really don't know how to answer the question, but I believe that we are, haven't really gotten any projects to use the money for.
I remember we can just talk about that, maybe other than this evening, but I think both in terms of projects that we had identified where, and again, it hasn't been the appropriate time to plant necessarily, but a couple of things is that, one, are the revenues that we should have gotten there, because some sites have been cleared, and therefore, there should be recompense. Secondly, how are we prioritizing the identification of where those trees could indeed be planted? And then, thirdly, where we have had locations where recompense has taken place. As an example, you know, a lot of trees were taken when the Birmingham Crossroads was, began to be developed. There was a tremendous number of trees that came out that originally had not been contemplated that they took out, and a lot of those trees went to Cogburn, and yet, some of those trees at Cogburn ended up dying. And I just want to make sure that with tree recompense, that we're actually making sure that those that get paid to plant them, and that those who are required to recompense also have to pay for any tree replacement. So, we just need to, I think, maybe track that, and maybe that's being tracked proactively, but it might be nice just to get an update on that.
Mark told me that it was for a period of two years, and so, that two years passed, and still, trees were dying because of the, I guess, the maintenance just wasn't there. Fulton County's not going to maintain, Fulton County Schools, I should say, is not going to maintain the trees, even though they've been put on their property. So, it's still up to us.
I do have one question. The Safebuilt School Grant we recently received, is it not included here, because we don't actually get to administer it? It's actually administered at state levels, so that's why it's not included revenue or expenses in here?
We won't receive funding for that. We won't ever actually see the money for that. We will get the assets for it. I believe that GDOT is going to be doing all of the work for that. So, we do have to account for the assets coming onboard, whenever they actually do come onboard. That won't actually be until next year.
But the revenue and related expenses, we don't ever account for unless they keep it on their books?
Right. From what I understand.
That's what I understand also, but I just want to make sure. And we have bridge repairs for land, and the bridge replacement, I assume that's the Cogburn Road.
Yeah, with the, the bridge on Cogburn that was estimated, I believe, at six hundred and ninety-five thousand, if we can get an estimate in terms of the differential between when something is initially estimated, and then what that actual cost is, based on a duration of time, in terms of increased cost, et cetera, because in speaking with Carter Lucas the other day, my impression is that, you know, those can be difficult to estimate. But if we can look at variations in actual cost by looking at other bridge replacements, I just want to make sure that we're anticipating a high enough cost to really cover the actual expense. And my guess is there's probably some analysis out there that we could look at, just to ensure that that six ninety-five covers us at both, not extremes, but covers the possibility of those costs being higher than what we've initially anticipated.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll be looking at all of that when we go through the process.
Okay. And are we going to talk, when is going to be the best time for us to talk about some of these projects and things of this nature, in terms of where dollars being taken away from parkland, et cetera?
We can have a discussion on Monday, or you can, if you had any questions, I guess Chris can answer those during the week. He has a more eloquent way of putting it than I do.
Because I know we've got the Arnold Porter Study, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand in that, but it really doesn't have any kind of, I'm assuming that's for the Master Plan and anything else that we have discussed, but is that just kind of placeholder number in there? Because I don't think we've ever decided exactly what we were going to want that scope to be.
Right. And I can't answer any questions dealing with, I mean, that, those specific projects, because I'm not that familiar with them, but I can certainly find out for you and send that information to you. I do know that we did look at each of the requests, and we felt that the safety, I guess, of the citizens at the time, especially dealing with the public works projects, were more prudent to put money towards in this fiscal year than Parks and Recreation at the time. So, I think we can certainly, you know, go through and justify that, if you want to, at the next council meeting.
Yeah, because I would like to make sure that we don't just presume that there's not some additional cost savings in other areas. I mean, we heard tonight that we may not need to purchase a brand-new fire station, I mean, a brand-new fire truck. I mean, we could buy a used fire truck. Those are expensive pieces of equipment that, as was just mentioned, the corridor study doesn't have a lot of meat behind that hundred and fifty. It's a large placeholder. So, I just would like to see us not presume that we need to just automatically take it out of that related acquisition.
And as we go through, I'm sorry.
I know, I was going to say, you know, as we kind of started the budget discussion with the thought process that we would need to outline questions, with Chris not being here, I knew that this was going to probably be the end result. I would just suggest that everyone, I mean, there's a lot of questions that I have, especially about the capital budget, because there's so many variations that we could go through. So, it would be very wise for us to put those questions together. There's no reason why we can't have those discussions, even though it's not a work session at the next meeting.
Thank you. That's good advice. So, we're anticipating that we would have then another discussion about those in greater detail on Monday?
Yes.
I would think absolutely.
Yes. Because that is whenever we would like to approve, or we would like for you to approve to adopt the budget.
And if we don't, and are not ready to approve a budget on Monday, what is the next timetable?
You can do it, I mean, we can have the special call meeting. We already have a special call meeting on September 28th, and so, we could do it at that time, but that is just getting down to nail-biting time, and so, if there's any other questions after that. We have to have a budget in place by September 30th.
Well, that was my question, was what's the deadline? Is the 30th?
September 30th.
So, we just have to do it by then.
If council doesn't have any more questions, we'll have those questions next Monday. We have some public comment, and since our city clerk is not here, Mr. Mark Reed, if you'll come to the podium and state your name, restate your name and your address.
All righty. Mark Reed, 14240 Phillips Circle. Most of you guys know I'm with Parks and Rec, so I looked at the Parks and Rec budget, and I just, I had a couple of questions, and maybe you guys already covered this, because I was in the Southern Eagle here, so. In the, in the goals and objectives, on the, under identification of potential capital project improvements, it had mentioned development plans for Birmingham Park, which obviously means we would have to, you know, send out an RFP and all that, and that's in the margin under a time period. But I did not see that as far as, you know, hiring a consultant, or the expense for the consultant in the budget summary. And the same also goes for the conduct comprehensive needs assessment down under improved marketing, communications, and community input. And that was supposed to, that is scheduled to start October 1st, you know, the assessment RFP, and then it says on the street, 11-1, I guess. But, but I wanted to make sure that in the, in the budget, that we have those items in there, the expense for the needs assessment, and then also the expense for the kind of development plans for the parks.
I asked that question of Chris, but go ahead.
Oh, I was actually just going to say, the goals and objectives that were actually included in this budget document were what was submitted at the time, whenever everybody had all of their requests submitted. And so, as we go through the process, we will tailor the goals and objectives to what was actually approved in the budget. So, just because it has something in here doesn't necessarily mean, and I'm not speaking in specifics to what you asked, just because there's something in the budget that says that our goal is to do this, is based on what was initially submitted as a request. But we do have funding in the Capital Projects Fund for these specific items that can be transferred over into the General Fund to cover them, if need be.
Where exactly are those in Capital Projects?
They're under Parks and Recreation. If you look at, I mean, if you click down to Capital Projects, and you go to Capital Project Fund Sum, I think it's a summary sheet in there. I don't have my budget document up, but it's, it should be in a bookmark that says summary. You click on that, and it should list, it doesn't list specifically, it just lists out. No.
And Chris did mention that his intent was that now that this process for our Parks and Rec Director, you know, receiving the resumes, which they got a good number, had closed, that his hope was that that person would be onboard October 1st, in order to help to facilitate this and to make these decisions.
Right. I'd like, well, I'd like to address two budget items on, on the salaries related to that, but then also, would like to address the position, at least from, from just my input. In the budget summary, it has the salary for the Parks and Rec Director budget, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred. But in the, and I didn't understand, it's in the maintenance and operating initiatives, the detail for fiscal year 2010, it had Recreation Programmer, thirty-one thousand, six hundred.
That was what was submitted, but it was not a, proposed to, for the, for the council to approve.
I see. Okay. So, my input, at least on a Parks and Rec person, for fiscal year 2010, is that we don't need a Parks and Rec Director as we would expect that to be, you know, somebody that has programming experience and, and that type of thing. I think, I really don't think we need the position at all in 2010, because we, to conduct a needs assessment, and to conduct the, kind of this first phase of this, you know, development planning, I think that could be spearheaded by another position underneath the City Manager, maybe like the Assistant City Manager, or another role within the department. I think it's premature to bring a Parks and Rec person onboard, but that's my opinion, but...
Did you read the summary of the job description that was posted that they were responding to?
No, I did not.
It really does contemplate exactly what you're saying. Maybe we could get you a copy of it, because just from the perspective of my involvement and a couple of people that I did meet with Chris, they're looking, he's looking at someone that would be a very high level, what should the picture be? What's the evaluation in the big picture of Parks and Recreation? As opposed to a programming person, or a person that's actually running Parks and Rec. He's looking at, you know, how are we going to develop these parks? You know, this person being involved in land acquisition, this person being, you know, having experience in develop, development, more so, evaluation and development, but then also being able to then maybe transition into what would be a true Parks and Recreation Director, like you might see in that.
Right.
You could compare it to Alpharetta's Mike Perry.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's great. I just think that early on, or at least in this next 12 months, that because they would have a lot of extra, in my opinion, they would have a lot of extra time, that the city could kind of get, you know, a better bang for its buck by having somebody that would kind of serve that purpose, but also could serve in other functions within the city, you know, as needed. Just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You said that we would address where the fees were paid for credit card fees, where exactly?
Oh, I'm sorry, they were in the Finance Department's budget. It should be under administrative fees.
About sixty thousand dollars for administrative fees?
Twenty-two thousand dollars is for bank fees, and thirty-eight thousand dollars is for credit card fees.
Wow. I look forward to some competitive bids on that. We need to look at that. That's, you know...
Merchant, I tell you, merchant fees for those credit cards are, it's unbelievable.
I mean, I paid my own last year, and I would love to be able to put in one credit card and transfer to our mom for, but Fulton County and all the other jurisdictions around charge you, rather than taking it out of their audit to do that. And I think we've got to find a way to, we don't have an extra sixty thousand dollars or so for that.
Right.
Maybe that would be a good evaluation for us to compare to the other cities, and even if we don't compare to the other cities, just to go forward with contemplating charging.
Because then we're going to get a big charge.
I bet some people would just write a check.
Yeah.
And some would still pay it.
But then they'd absorb costs.
Just fine.
Right, yeah.
It is.
But it's becoming a speeded-up, you pay the reference, it's convenient for the city.
Any other questions? Okay, so, prepare your questions and send them ahead of time for next week to Stacy and Chris, so y'all can be prepared to address them, you know, prior to contemplating an approval of this. Our city clerk's not here, so we're not going to sound the next item. We are going to mention, for the record, that we have postponed our review of the variance discussion, and Mr. Gerard will review this at 5:00 on Monday, prior to our council meeting. Thank you all, and thanks to the public who'll be in here. We appreciate you guys supporting us all night. Thank you, Mayor Proctor. This meeting is adjourned.